Good evening. I would like to call to order the special school board meeting of July 14, 2020. This evening, leading the pledge of allegiance, member Calderon.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. If you all would please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon. Let the record reflect that Superintendent Griffin, School Board Attorney Ms. Beaman, School Board Clerk Ms. Moreimus, and School Board Chair Allmond are present in person for this meeting. Vice Chairman Pennock, Member Sanchez, Member Kraus, and Member Calderon are participating by phone via WebEx. Is there a motion to approve the agenda outline?
No.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent, you have a report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I wanted to have a discussion this evening related to the creation of our Equity Council. I thought, with all the focus on the reopening, I didn't want to bring it as an item to vote on this evening, but really give some direction of what you want that committee to look like and what it should be. We've all had the opportunity this past summer. We've had organized groups of community leaders, school leaders, student leaders, to really talk to us about equity. And I think where I'm coming from on this is I would like to put something in place that will sustain and keep this as a focus over time. I don't want to put something in place that lasts two months, three months, but something that over time could become part of our policy. I'm thinking of an oversight committee to look at our textbooks and specifically, who are the authors of our textbooks? Our hiring practices? And do we have equity in our hiring? Is there implicit bias? Do we need additional cultural competency training? I think all of those issues need to stay relevant and on our schedule. So as I've spoken about, I think it's important for us to put together an Equity Council. And a few things, I'd like to hear this evening what you think that might look like. My original suggestion to everybody was maybe each board member select a few members of the community or our employees to be part of the committee. And then we can decide, it can be a superintendent committee, or it could be a school board committee. It doesn't matter to me. What does matter is that we stay true to our word and we stay on this mission that we have always been on to put this together. So Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'd just love to have some conversation, hear some comments from the board members.
Thank you. So board members, for this evening, the roll call order is Vice Chair Pennock, Member Calderon, Member Sanchez, Member Kraus, and then myself, if you have any input at this time. Vice Chair Pennock.
I do have some feedback. I think, I feel strongly that this committee, my recommendation that this fall under a board committee. This way, it becomes evergreen of sorts. We have accountability to ensure that it continues to report on a regular basis. It doesn't fall off our radar. It doesn't fall under the rug. We have transparency. We have reporting responsibilities. I don't mind adding another meeting to our calendar when it's this kind of a meeting and this kind of, I can't pick the right word out of my head, but the magnitude of what this committee represents, I think we owe it to ourselves to make sure that we are sending the strong message to all of our stakeholders that we mean business. So that's my feeling.
Thank you. Member Calderon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too feel it should be a school board committee. I feel we need to have representation throughout the district. I'd like to have a parent voice, community voice, student voice, teacher voice, administrative voice. And I don't want to have meetings just to meet. I want to ensure there will be action. I wanted to have accountability to that action. I want this committee to be able to ask for data, give suggestions to us on how better to lead, to represent all stakeholders. And any support that I can give our staff to help this be successful, I'd be more than happy to do so. And thank you for bringing this to us for this important discussion and action.
Thank you. Member Sanchez?
Yes, I feel the same way. Talking to Dr. Griffin about this, something passionate to me for a very long time. You know, the equity in our textbooks, to our community leaders, to our community in general. I think it needs to go from our Great Star program all the way up to K through 12th grade. I'd like to see us reach out to everyone, as many people as possible. And I believe it should be a board discussion. And I don't even mind if we have multiple meetings. I know that would probably be a lot on your plate, Dr. Griffin. But even if we have maybe Dr. Cody and you both tag team off each other, this way, we're all in this together, especially since she helps so much with unitary status. I think that that would be awesome. I think that we need to have a diverse group, culturally diverse group. And the discussions need to be open, honest, and action needs to take place. And there's always room for improvement. And this is a time that we need to do it, which we've done it years ago. So I'm glad to see that this is finally taking place. So this advisory board is going to be fabulous.
Thank you. Member Kraus?
Thank you. I too am so grateful, Dr. Griffin, for your recommendation for this committee. And I am fine with it being a school board committee. I would also like to include Dr. Cody. I know she's got so much, but I was going to suggest that as well. She worked so hard in the past, and I want her voice as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that Ms. Sanchez read my notes, because basically everything I wrote down, she's shared with you. I agree with the unitary status. I think that lesson needs to be shared more often than we do. Because oftentimes, we talk about, or we hear about, a global problem, and we need to bring it down to Seminole County. I know we talked about two-year terms. I think I'd like to see the initial board have half of the members agree to one year, and they could re-up another time after sitting out once perhaps, and the other half go for two-year. That way, you have some change and some continuity. I'd like it to, rather than mirror, I'd like it to reflect our diversity. I know that we challenge with SAC to try to get fair representation of the different populations. But I think if we broaden it to not just parents, we'll have a better opportunity for that. And I'd also like you to have a conversation, or us to have a conversation with Maurice Snead for any guidance she might offer us with that regard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, board members. And as I said at the beginning, everybody's focused on school reopening, but I didn't want to let this fall to the wayside. And I will bring an action item to the July 28 meeting based on the input that I got this evening. Thank you for your time with that. It's very, very important. And this will ensure that our district has ongoing oversight for the remainder of time, because eventually, we will make this part of policy. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do you have public comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have four video comment submissions that Mr. Ackerman is going to assist in. And then I will read the written comment in the order they were received.
Thank you very much.
The first video comment is from Megan Gerard.
Hi, my name is Megan Gerard. My son is going to be a senior this year at Croombs. He worked really hard to become a senior there. It's not an easy school to succeed at. I think many of you know that, especially we can see how many freshmen start there and how many end up actually graduating from there. Well, he's 17, which means he's no less at risk than any other adult. And I am an at-risk person due to some health complications that I have. So if I get it, it could be very serious for me. I don't want my son to go to brick and mortar school. I especially don't want him to go to school, brick and mortar school here in Florida, where so many people think that this is a hoax. There are conspiracy theorists who aren't taking any precautions whatsoever. I'm not comfortable with this, and I don't think it's fair. I feel like my son is being used as cannon fodder. My son is being a pawn in a political game. This isn't right. This isn't fair. I demand an online option for him. And an online option that is going to provide him with a Croombs diploma. Not a virtual school diploma, not a GED, not any other crap. I want him to have a Croombs diploma because he earned it. Put yourself in our shoes. Could you imagine the lifelong trauma and the guilt he would feel if he got COVID? Brought up home to me, and I got sick, and I have lifelong complications from it, or worse? Look, if it's not safe enough for you guys to meet in person, it's not safe enough for them to be cooped up in a classroom. Furthermore, I have some really important questions that I hope you've considered. Especially, a school with so few teachers as Croombs. So if a teacher tests positive for COVID, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave going to be covered and paid for? What about their medical expenses? If that teacher has seven classes a day with 30 students each, do all 150 to 200 of the teacher's students then need to stay home in quarantine for 14 days because they were exposed? What about all of those students? Do they all have to get tested? Who's going to pay for that test? Substitute teacher? Are they going to get a substitute to cover? What substitute is going to want to go and be the teacher in front of a bunch of kids who've been exposed at substitute teacher pay? Not to mention that the substitutes travel from school to school to school to school, spreading it from place to place to place to place everywhere they go? What if someone who lives in the same household, does a teacher get sick? Does that teacher still have to take 14 days off? Will those 14 days be paid? Will their medical expenses be paid? What if a student in my kid's class test positive? What are you going to do then? Are you going to send out an email? Am I going to know who it is? How is this going to work? Have you even thought about all of this? The governor's insane. Please, don't hold my family captive. Thank you.
The second public video is from Megan Robachard.
Hi, my name is Megan Robachard, and I'm a rising senior at Lyman High School. I'm also a member of the Lyman Band, and I'll be drum major for the 2021 school year. I'm not exaggerating when I tell you that band brings me more joy than anything else in my entire life. Ever since I've joined in sixth grade, it's been my rock, helping me through everything. These past few years, it's really helped me with my mental health, especially my anxiety, something I've always struggled with. I know for a fact that I'm not the only one when I say people my age rely on band and the fine arts for our mental stability. One of the most beautiful and most stubborn things about music is that no matter how hard people may try, it can never be achieved on computers. No matter what, it will never be the same as people performing it in one room and making music together. However, during this time, that can cause issues. I know this county has always taken the fine arts extremely seriously, and I'm so, so grateful for that. But right now, it matters more than ever. I'm asking you, I'm begging you, that whatever you do, whatever you decide, please incorporate the fine arts into your plan. In attempting to protect others' physical health, you are asking us to sacrifice our mental health. A recent study conducted by the World Journal of Psychiatry found that music is a valid therapy and can, in fact, reduce depression and anxiety. It can also improve mood, self-esteem, and our quality of life. We need music. We need the fine arts. It is a necessity. I understand it might look different. The classes might be smaller, but we need something. Don't tell me that this is just one year of my life. Because you know, especially now, so much can change from one year to the next. This is not a ploy to get what I want. This is not a guilt trip. I don't know how to make you understand. I'm just going to simply outline the facts and tell you this. This county has the largest, second-largest, and sixth-largest bands in the entire state. That's just the band kids. There's also chorus, theater, and dance. And all of us rely on the fine arts. This rock that so many of us have relied on for the past seven years can't afford to be moved now. We need this for our health. Thank you for your time.
The next video submission is from Jason Zimmerman.
Good evening. My name is Jason Zimmerman. I live at 3815 Brantley Place Circle with my wife and three school-aged kids. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I really want to thank you for the opportunity to hear at the workshop this morning all the diligence you guys have been putting in over the last couple of weeks and months for the school reopening plan. It was enlightening to hear from you. It was enlightening to hear the questions. And I really appreciate and applaud the experts like Dr. Hussey, who laid to rest a lot of the concerns that I know that my wife and I were having, and I know that other people in our school groups were having as well. So I really do want to thank you for that. I'm submitting a comment tonight because I really have two concerns and really two questions. The first concern is, as Dr. Hussey said in his story about two weeks ago, someone asked him, "What should schools do?" He said, "Ask me in two weeks." The person called back and said, "Well, what do you think?" And he really wants to say, "Ask me in two weeks again." If we don't have to open schools August 10th, why are we even thinking about opening schools August 10th? Let's give it more time. The reopening plan this morning was felt rushed, that we were trying to get the meeting over so that we can have time to revise the plan, so it'll be ready for tonight at 5:30. If there's no reason to start August 10th, and we're still over 10% positivity rate in Seminole County, which is what the Department of Health still has us, why are we pushing to open August 10th? Let's take our time and do this right. It seems like if we have the opportunity to start August 30th without violating any state or local rule, that we can still pay our teachers for the time because of that absolutely should happen. There's no reason to force a situation when we don't need to. My second comment, or the second question is, what are you going to do about letting parents and teachers and other students know about potential positive COVID tests in the schools? Now, I've seen a lot of misguided regarding, well, schools can't release that information because it's HIPAA violation, but it's not. And as some expert said this morning at the workshop, data is important. In order for us to make these decisions as parents for our kids, and in order for teachers to make their decisions, and staff and administration, we have to know. So is there a commitment that if there is a positive COVID test or a positive COVID suspicion in a school, that you will promptly let the parents, teachers, administrators of that school know? Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
And the final video submission is from Leah Words.
Hi, everyone. We both watched the work session, all of it this morning. And we want to thank everyone for putting their best foot forward and working on this plan. As two teachers in Seminole County, we do have questions about the face-to-face options when it comes to teacher evaluations. As we all know, we use the Marzano Indicator system. And most of those indicators do require that kids are working with each other, that they're playing games, that they're in contact. So we would like the board to discuss how modifications will be made for teacher evaluation when kids have to be six feet apart, when they have to be wearing masks. A lot of the indicators that we normally rate teachers on are just simply not doable in this environment. So if you could touch on that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
The first written comment. Madam Chair, stop if at any point you want to make a comment or question.
I'm jotting down. Board members, I hope you're jotting down any notes you have or questions.
I'm not sure if your mic is on, Madam Chair.
It is.
Okay. I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes. Now I can't. Thank you. The first written comment is from Barbara Shortall from Longwood. And she states, "I would like the county to consider delaying school start by two weeks to help understand and prepare for the safety of all during the COVID pandemic. Proposed start date is 8/24/20." Next, from Vanessa Weldon from Longwood. And she writes a five-point comment. "I like, first, I like the plan where K through six went to face-to-face, and 712 went virtual, with K6 split among the host school, middle, and high schools. Was this plan state-approved? What do the numbers have to look like for this plan to be put into place? The pediatric positivity rate for Seminole County was 21.8, with the four deaths being between ages 10 and 18. Two, if we do the K6 face-to-face split, how will it be decided who goes to what school? My son is close enough to walk to his elementary, but would need to be bussed if he is slated to go to other host school. Are you looking at the student residence to minimize the number of kids on buses and time on buses? Three, if students go back face-to-face, will the Kid Zone and Beyond program for before and after care still be available? How will social distancing and mask standards be for that program? Number five, how will, number four, how will we arrive and departure be handled? Last year, students would be waiting in the auditorium, which would get crowded before teachers would come to get them. What plans are being put in place to minimize crowding during these times? And the fifth comment, if students share desks, will there be partitions or plexiglass between them? What will be the sanitation protocols in elementary schools? And will the schools be providing extra sanitizers and wipes? Sincerely, Vanessa Weldon." The next comment's from Anna Slavich. And she writes, "I think it's important to know that while almost every teacher desperately wants to be back in the classroom, most do not feel safe doing so. Every colleague that I have spoken with has indicated that they do not feel safe returning to school and that they believe with three to four weeks of opening school back up at full capacity, we will be in such a crisis that we will be forced to return to distance learning or some iteration of it. I have heard of Seminole Connect and hope that this is an option for teachers to work safely from home, but really put the students to work. Distance learning was frustrating as we were constantly told to decrease the amount of work we were giving students. Given the opportunities, many teachers can make remote learning work and work well. Given the space and contact constraints that we will no doubt be facing going back into the classroom, the only way teachers can effectively teach and interact would be if students had a one-to-one computer ratio. The only way to socially distance and still have meaningful student interaction, discussion, group activities, et cetera, would be to put those interactions online. I know we are all weighing what is best for our children, our families, and ourselves. If the only option available to me are to teach a virtual school with a preset and cookie cutter curriculum, which seemingly takes away my opportunity to actually teach or be in person with a classroom packed with 24 students, then I will choose my classroom. However, this decision comes with great cost. Once we are exposed to so many others, neither myself nor my children will be able to see their grandparents or great-grandparents. I sincerely hope that teachers are given a third option to effectively teach their students with rigor and required meeting times online. I have put my decision in the Lord's hands. I am not afraid of possibly dying, but I do not ever want to be responsible for passing COVID-19 on to someone else that is susceptible. I never want to be the reason for another person's death. That is my biggest fear in returning to the classroom." The next comment comes from Charlotte Jones Roberts. And this person states, "I'm in favor of the hybrid approach to reopening. My daughter will be a sixth grader at Indian Trails Middle School this coming school year, and I think this would be an ideal way for her to see her pod of friends while simultaneously not being overexposed to potential contamination. Your split plan seems like it would be perfect for my daughter. UCF has seen incredible success with the blended learning model. Students report higher satisfaction with their courses. They have an entire resource for creating blended learning. She provided a link, which I forwarded to the entire school board. As cited in the U.S. Department of Education's 2010 Evaluation of Evidence-Based Practices in Online Learning: A Meta-Analysis and Review of Online Learning Studies, students in online conditions performed modestly better, on average, than those learning the same material through traditional face-to-face instruction. And notably, instruction combining online and face-to-face elements had a larger advantage relative to purely face-to-face instruction than did purely online instruction. I hope you consider this closely. Best, Charlotte Rose Roberts, MA, Instructional Design." Next is from Joshua Walker. "Seminole County School Board Members, I am writing you today as the parent of an incoming kindergarten student. He is set to begin his education journey this fall. I have seen the options being proposed, and I am very pleased he will be able to attend school in the traditional face-to-face setting this year. I hope this is a non-negotiable and is something I do not have to fight for. I do not think there is a single argument in favor of online learning for all, especially for a five-year-old. Not being able to have in-person school, learning from his teacher, and interact and socialize with peers would be detrimental for any child. Their educational and social ramifications of not attending in-person school this year would be significant. My son will not be robbed of his kindergarten year and will not be participating in virtual school. I could list off many, many reasons why virtual school for all does not work, but thankfully, this does not seem like something that is being negotiated, so we are grateful for that. We have another issue we want to address with in-person school. My son, or any child, should not have to wear a mask all day at school. As a matter of fact, he will not. Masks have never been proven to be effective. We live in Florida. It feels like 100 degrees for days in August. It is dangerous to put facial coverings on children all day long and restrict their air and oxygen. Children are not only at virtually zero risk for seriously contracting this virus, they have also been consistently proven to not be transmitters either. Expecting them to keep a mask on their face all day is not only unrealistic, every child will be taking them off and touching their faces even more. It is also unnecessary and potentially dangerous. Speaking on behalf of my child, he is nervous about making friends, and he is also, and he also has a language delay. Having to speak through a mask will only make this more challenging for him. He has grown to be fearful of other children and adults with all of the fear that is being spread. He is being made to think every person is dangerous and getting him sick. We can thank the media message as a whole for that. This whole situation is causing damage to children mentally, emotionally, and socially. If this continues much longer, there will be long-lasting effects. I urge you to consider the children when making decisions. Children who do not have voices. Children who are being completely neglected by teachers' unions when they list their demands. The science is there. It will be more dangerous to keep schools closed than open. It will do more harm than good to masked children and have them view everyone around them as a dangerous disease carrier. Please, help restore normalcy for this generation. Your decision today will change lives forever. Please make the right one. Lastly, I would like for you to please remember that the voices you hear at this meeting are not the majority. There are thousands of parents who cannot attend this meeting for various reasons. Parents that are working long hours to support their family. Parents who do not have internet access to find out about the meeting or write in. Parents that need schools to be open so that they can go to work for their children and can get the actual educational help they need. Please do not forget these parents and their children when other voices like they are speaking for everyone. Thank you." Next is from Betsy Sutherland. Betsy writes, "Dear School Board Members, I am writing to you as a concerned parent of two Woodland Elementary School children, upcoming fifth and first graders. We love Woodlands. We love the principal, we love the teachers, and we love the students. I'm an active PTA board member there, and I'm proud to have been selected as last year's Dividend of the Year. We have loved being active in the Woodlands community, but now, due to the continuing increase of COVID-19 cases, I am scared to send my children back to school we have all loved so dearly. I understand there is heavy pressure on local school officials to reopen schools, Florida schools, in full, in an effort to help revive the economy. However, I am hopeful that SCPS takes a stand to provide a safer option that truly takes into consideration the physical and emotional well-being of its faculty, support staff, students, families, and community. I also understand that Seminole County Virtual School is an alternative to brick-and-mortar education, but I am hoping that there will be other options available where students are able to stay more closely connected to their regularly-assigned are able to stay more closely connected to their regularly-assigned schools, teachers, and classroom, while not being required to attend full-time in person. To this end, I am hoping you will consider implementing the options outlined below. One, a split schedule. The option would enable appropriate social distancing by reducing class size by 50%. As an example, Group A students would attend class on Mondays and Thursdays. Group B students on Thursdays and Fridays, with deep cleaning done after school each evening and Wednesdays. The alternating group would work virtually on off days. This split schedule option combines safe in-class instruction with virtual learning, while avoiding having students go more than three days without direct teacher classroom contact. Two, live streaming, teacher-directed virtual learning. This option would be available for families who would prefer not to send their children to school until after the pandemic subsides. This option would allow students to follow along with their teachers' lectures and activities from home via live streaming or tape delay, while giving them the emotional comfort of knowing they still have a connection with their school community. Students would be assigned to the same teacher classroom they would have been placed in if they were attending in person, which will allow students in PRIMEs classes and students with other special educational needs to be placed appropriately. While it may not be an option to actively participate in class discussion as they would if they were in the classroom or on a Zoom, they would be able to make discussion, they would be able to make notes on any questions they had and ask their teacher at a designated time. Work assigned in the classroom would be available for live streaming students to access and complete online. This option would also allow for a smoother transition back into the classroom for students planning to return to brick-and-mortar schooling as soon as safely possible. Additionally, in contrast to the separate Seminole County Virtual School curriculum, this option would allow those students temporarily learning from home to stay current on their own class curriculum. Thank you for your time and consideration in making the 2021 school year safe, a safe one for Seminole County families. Sincerely, Betsy Sutherland." Next is from Nancy and Michael Poe from Winter Springs, and they write, "Dearest Dr. Griffin and School Board Members, my name is Nancy Poe, and I have an incredible role as an English educator for Lyman High School and have been a dedicated Seminole County Public School educator for over 15 years. My husband, Michael Poe, is also a Seminole County educator of eight years at Indian Trails Middle School. All three of our children have graduated from Winter Springs High School. Our daughter just recently graduated in May of 2020. While we value teaching in a brick-and-mortar setting as our primary responsibility is to teach the at-risk population, our kids thrive to obtain face-to-face instruction as well as the life lessons we proudly provide. However, returning currently to a brick-and-mortar setting for both of us is terrifying and already affecting our health. Our oldest son, Robert Poe, has been battling brain cancer, hmm, glioblastoma, apologize for that, for the past five and a half years. He is so susceptible to any illness and will not survive a COVID-19 infection. My husband and I, in addition to many other teachers and staff members, believe we have no other choice but to jeopardize our lives or the lives of our loved ones to return to the brick-and-mortar setting in August. Consequently, if any, if either my husband or I are exposed to anyone with COVID-19, we will have to move out of my house and away from our family to keep everyone safe. Theoretically, we will have no knowledge if we come into contact with someone who is asymptomatic. Therefore, our only course of action will be to move away from our family. We will still, we are still paying for the cost incurred to fight our son's cancer. As a result, we do not have the funds to pay for our hotel room for days, let alone months. We are truly scared to be around anyone. As long as people still test positive, we will be scared to return to life as it was. Today, according to the Florida COVID data and surveillance dashboard, the Florida Department of Health, Division of Disease Control and Health Protection lists Seminole County as having 4,068 positive residents. Please do not make us choose between keeping our careers and losing our son. While our, while cancer survivors may not be at high risk for COVID-19, emerging research shows, does show, if they develop the disease, they are more likely to have complications and have to be hospitalized than those who have never had cancer." Are cancer survivors at high risk for COVID-19? This article was retrieved July 11, 2020. I forwarded these comments to the board. It has a link to the article that she's referencing here. Since cancer patients are typically immune, immune-suppressed, keeping the virus away from them is important. According to Donna Moran, Moffitt Cancer Center Director of Quality and Patient Safety, that means caregivers have to be extra vigilant in order to remain healthy and to keep the risk of infection as low as possible. Moran D. and Blanchard S., 2020, April 9. Caregivers take extra steps for your own health. This was another linked article in her notes. Please take the health of school staff, in addition to students, when making this decision. Please give us all a choice. Sincerely, Nancy Poe." The next is from Christina Parsons. And she writes, "Greetings, Dr. Griffin and esteemed Seminole County School Board Members. As a concerned Seminole County resident, parent of a Seminole County student, and a Seminole County employee, I respectfully urge that you postpone opening schools on 8/10/2020. Please consider reopening at a later date, when we can see some improvement on the rapid spread among our citizens. At this time, I simply do not feel that reopening, the reopening plan is nearly inclusive enough to address the many unanswered questions, circumstances, and situations that we will be facing. Our current guidelines for exclusion from school for illness or injury are based on information from 2004 and 2006. This is disheartening to say the least. Our students and our staff deserve a safe and healthy school and workplace, a place where our focus can be on teaching and learning instead of on, of whether or not we will get sick or bring home illness to our families. Please know I deeply appreciate your time and consideration. I know that you have spent many hours working on this plan. We need to see a significant decline in the new cases that will permit us to move safely into the next phase before putting our students, staff, and families at risk. The plan simply needs to be far more comprehensive in order to address the conditions and contingencies that are bound to occur on a day-to-day basis. Sincerely, Christina Parsons." Next, from Dorothy Williams. Dorothy lists a series of questions, so it's not so much a comment written to the board. Please see the attached. What are the school board and school plans for and when? Keeping children and staff safe? Testing? Mandatory masks? Notifying parents when there's an outbreak? Class size? RAS? Lunch? Seating? School becomes a hotspot? More people are infected and dying in Seminole County? Parent notification if a child is sick or coughed, spit or coughed on another student? Disciplinary measures if, when if a child is purposely spit or coughed on other students? That is from Dorothy Williams. The next comment comes from Jody Parham? Parham? And she writes, "Good evening. I am speaking to you tonight with regard to the vote on the reopening of our schools. I proudly have four children currently attending Seminole County Public Schools. I am an active dividend and truly enjoy helping in any capacity within our schools. Tonight, I am hopeful the county, that our family moved to specifically for the incredible, incredible teachers that you employ, will vote to reopen our schools. This situation, while unprecedented and unpredictable, is understandably not an easy one to make. I've seen, over the course of past months, people ridicule one another for choices they make or differing opinions. I encountered a support staff member at a Seminole County Public School ridicule a special-needs child and the parent for said child not having a mask on, when this child clearly had sensory issues preventing them from sitting, let alone keeping a covering on their face. This cannot be allowed to happen anywhere, especially schools. There has to be some type of accountability on both sides to treat each other kindly. At the end of the day, we will have to do what is best for our individual families. As adults, we are supposed to teach our children not to point fingers and blame others, especially when all the facts are not known. I am grateful that our county has offered so many choices to make sure that there are options in this impossible time. For those of us who cannot utilize virtual options, we need the brick-and-mortar the schools have provided for generations. This is all new territory. This is no perfect way to get things right with so many variables at play. It will take patience from everyone and even more from, so from our teachers who already move mountains with little resources. Fear can have two meanings. Forget everything and run, or face everything and rise. Please do the right thing tonight and show our kids we can rise from these extraordinarily uncharted times and prevail. Thank you, Jody Parham." The next comment was submitted under the name of John Doe. And it was two questions. One, for students in IB, how will they receive information or advertisement relevant to the program's requirements? Information about CAS, EE meetings, et cetera? The second question was, "If an online option where teachers run live lessons over the internet is made available, can high school students start later than 8:00 AM? If there is some kind of live meeting over WebEx, for example, can these meetings start no earlier than 8:00 AM?" Next comment is from Savannah Alcantara. And her comments read, "How will transportation to and from school work with regards to having, having to social distance? More buses, more drivers? Does this work with the school budget? What are the procedures if a student or teacher discover they have COVID? Does the whole class have to quarantine? If yes, then I assume a substitute will be put in place of the teacher. So what type of education is my child really getting by risking their lives to sit in a class with a substitute all day? What are my options if I don't want to send my children to school? Do I have the option to have them to, to, to have them to virtual learning from home? Or is it face-to-face, or is face-to-face mandatory? Will tests be provided at the schools for teachers and students? Will PPE covers be provided to students and teachers? Or will this need to be provided by us, the parents? Thank you for your time." The next comment's from Ursula Castillo. And she writes, "As a parent of an IEP student and entering kindergartner, the option for brick-and-mortar looks better due to the quality of education. However, due to the pandemia, I understand that teacher-staff may get impacted, as of course, children, then the second option of hybrid will work better. What I don't see in the analysis is a contingency plan for brick-and-mortar or hybrid. The children might be attending school and all of a sudden face a disruption due to another outbreak. This may have psychological consequences. Please address this item." The next comment is from Angie Wade. And her topic is concerning voluntary pre-kindergarten. If it wasn't already addressed, I'd like to know, is there a remote learning plan in place for social distancing students who are signed up for VPK for the 2021 school year? The next comment is from Christine DeFazio. And she writes, two comments. One, if we already registered our child via the Seminole County Virtual School registration form and want to change to Connect, can we do so? If so, how, where can this be done? And two, with regards to Connect, is there an option where you get a teacher who will teach online only the entire semester? Or is this, or is the expectation that any Connect teacher may be teaching both in-person and online at the same time at some point during the year? If there is the option to select an online-only teacher, how can we make this our preference? Specific to littles, I have concerns with regard to a teacher trying to balance educating children in the classroom and online at the same time. Some of those concerns include face mask, barriers needed, but adding to difficulty hearing online, attention span in a unique environment, and general noise issues impacting the quality of education. I'd like to have my child taught by a professional and think Connect would, Connect would be a great option, but only if that teacher were teaching solely online. Thank you." The next comments come from Mr. and Mrs. Nag. And they write, a three-point question. Would POE, i.e. biotech, and AP courses, i.e. chemistry and physics, with lab requirements, be offered via Seminole Connect option? If so, would these labs be offered virtually? If POE courses with labs are not offered virtually, would the student be allowed to drop that course for the next school year and still maintain enrollment in the Choices School, in the Choice School? The next comment is from Laine Petrino. And they write, "Hello, I am the parent of two elementary school girls. I attended, I attended the meeting this morning and have several questions regarding the hybrid model for the elementary school students. One, I love the Seminole Connect option, specifically they're getting a classroom-like experience without classroom exposure. I love that if we choose to go back to the classroom, we get to stay with the same teacher, which is amazing for continuity. What I can't understand is that if we want to choose the hybrid option, we have to pair it with virtual school. Why? Is it explained that the schoolwork and learning plans are different for virtual schools compared to the face-to-face option and that Seminole Connect, which would mirror each other? But if we choose the hybrid option as an elementary school family, we have to use virtual? Please explain, because I would much rather pair hybrid with Connect. Seems like much more of a seamless transition. Same teacher, same classroom, just viewing from home versus viewing in person. Also, if we divide the students who select the Connect option across all the classrooms, that would make class size much smaller, reducing exposure even more. Why can hybrid be done with the Connect option for middle school and high school but not elementary? The second point is Seminole Connect and virtual school had clear guidelines on when you can switch between instruction models, every nine weeks and in January 2021, respectively. But there's nothing about when the folks who choose hybrid or face-to-face options can switch if they feel like they need to. Can you elaborate? And the final point? Who decides the students' in-class schedule for the hybrid option? The family? The teachers? Do we submit our schedule and need to get it approved? Are there limited schedule options that we choose from? Example, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday only? Or can we just take it day by day and do whatever we want? Do you have any details on this? Thank you, Laine Petrino." Next comments from Sharon Franz. And it's concerning VPK during COVID-19. "Good evening, Superintendent Griffin and members of the school board. My name is Sharon Franz, and I am the parent of a rising second grader at Redbug Elementary. I feel that the education options presented for elementary students are fantastic, with something to cater to nearly every family's needs, and I plan to select the Seminole Connect option for my son. It is my belief that by doing so, I less, I lessen the exposure risk, not just for my family, but also for his classmates, as well as the amazing teachers and staff at Redbug. That said, I also have a younger child set to begin VPK in August. During the morning's discussion, it was mentioned that VPK will proceed with in-person schooling following the elementary school safety guidelines. Having been through the preschool experience once before, I am aware of how much learning goes on in the classroom beyond just academics. However, there, these are not normal times, and Seminole Connect was emphasized as being the school board's top choice for as many students as possible. If that is the case, why isn't such an option available for our youngest learners? I am a proponent of masks. I am a proponent of social distancing, but I also have realistic expectations, and the majority of four-year-olds cannot feasibly keep masks on and their hands to themselves for the duration of a school day. That is asking a lot of them. I am aware that VPK is a somewhat separate entity. However, as they are hosted on Seminole County Public School campuses, they are included in all other school-wide activities. Why would they be excluded from safe educational options during these unprecedented times? I respectfully ask that you consider a safe alternative to in-person schooling for the future of Seminole County. Thank you for your time and for putting the children and teachers of Seminole County first." The next comment is from, I apologize if I don't do this last name correctly, Alexa Langkorth from Castleberry. And they write, "Dear members of the School Board of Seminole County, my name is Alexa, oh, thank you, Langkorth, I did write, and I am an elementary school teacher in this district. I am writing to you in regards to two concerns that I have for the upcoming school year that should be included in the reopening plan. I am very concerned about the fact that teachers are not giving, given any options in this upcoming school year. In addition to student choice, teachers should also be able to make the same choices, especially because they are at a higher risk. Please take into consideration all of the teachers who do not feel safe teaching face-to-face during their personal health or live with loved ones who are at risk, or live with loved ones who are at risk. Teachers resigning or choosing to stay in the profession just because they have no other choice financially is not keeping teachers and their health in the forefront of this plan. All teachers deserve to feel safe. I understand that giving student choices and teacher's choice is complicated and messy, but they need to be given equal value. We need to be just as flexible with what learning looks like for our students as we are with what teaching looks like for our teachers. I am asking board members to add to the plan guaranteed options for teachers other than face-to-face brick-and-mortar, regardless of student registration numbers. Secondly, masks should be required when elementary students are at their seats in the classroom. Even though this age group is less at risk, their teachers- Even though this age group is less at risk, their teachers are not. Classrooms are small enclosed spaces that are not well-ventilated enough to be considered safe. The space between desks in a classroom, which for most rooms cannot possibly be six feet apart, do not provide enough protection for other students and teachers in this environment. Students discussing and answering questions without masks raises even higher concerns as that causes more potential COVID aerosols to circulate throughout the classroom. I am asking board members to remove from the plan the ability for students to remove their masks when sitting at their seats in the classroom. Please take these thoughts into consideration before passing this reopening plan. Thank you for your time and presence during these difficult times." The next comment is from Judy Ning. And her comments read, "I am concerned there is too much attention given to the fact that kids are not dying often enough from this disease, so it's okay to get infected. Twenty years ago, I watched my mother struggle for every breath before emphysema took her life. It was a horrible process. COVID-19 patients, as they struggle to breathe, do not even get their loved ones around them. Being on a ventilator is not a routine procedure that leaves the patient unaffected. Everything must be done to avoid anyone getting this disease, and educators must be considered as important as children. The task of reopening the schools is maybe the biggest challenge you all will ever face. I don't envy you. I would like to see 100% remote learning, but our leaders in the state have failed us again by removing that option. If I must return to the classroom, I will, but I implore you to help us make it safe, or maybe safer is the word, because there will be spread of the virus. You can be sure of that. I would like to see every teacher have a Plexiglas partition, masks provided and required for our students. Sanitizing wipes and sanitizing gel must be provided. I also think every employee should be given two sets of scrubs, just like in the hospital, so they can change and wash their work clothes upon returning home so not to infect their families. Every child should have their own set of books and a computer to use at school. Personally, I do not plan on collecting papers from the students; they will need to continue to do online submissions. I am also concerned that teachers who are in the classroom teaching students and connecting to students online will have an overwhelming amount of additional work by connecting with those online separately from the face-to-face. But no matter how extensive the protective measures are, the students will grow weary of them sooner or later, and we will be spending considerable time and energy trying to keep everyone safe. This will be expensive. I realize there are additional funding sources, but it cannot include reducing salaries of educators. Perhaps the school board members could reduce or forego their salaries for a year, and all top-salaried employees that do not work directly with students can take a reduction for the 2021 school year. Some of these folks make in excess of $175,000. Another concern would be opening schools later in August. This must be avoided if educators are to have delayed paychecks. Most of us live paycheck to paycheck. I lived through this once in Volusia County. It was difficult. This would make a bad situation even worse. Educators are now emergency essential workers. We need to be treated as such and have the personal protective equipment to keep us safe. Thank you." The next comment comes from Krista Kane. And she writes, "As a trained epidemiologist and an active mental health counselor, I see that the decision of when and how to educate our children is an extremely important and heavy one. I recognize the agony that the members of the school board are likely feeling in making the decision on how to reopen schools. Students need to learn and receive other services, especially meals and the extra support given to students with IEPs. Parents need to be able to work and therefore to have their children taken care of. We are all stressed, and we all need normalcy. Unfortunately, normalcy will currently come at the cost of lives lost and quality of life lost, and that normalcy is not worth the cost we will pay. Even if there aren't long-term health effects of COVID-19 to consider, which is doubtful, and even if zero children in Seminole County have significant effects because of COVID-19, which is doubtful, opening schools with any in-person component will increase the risk of spread in the community. The school district has 10,000 adult employees. If those employees come to work, some of them will get sick. Others will be asymptomatic and bring the virus to their friends and families. Between employees and their loved ones, what proportion are high-risk? I would bet many are. Are teachers and employees being given any choice other than return to work under whatever plan is approved or quit? Would you want to be told to risk your and your loved ones' lives or be unemployed? If schools are opened, many teachers will quit to protect their lives. Please don't put teachers in the position of choosing between their lives and feeding their families. It is morally wrong to ask anyone to do this. Plus, from a logistics standpoint, how will this loss of teachers be handled when we already had a shortage of teachers? How will safer, small class sizes be kept when teachers quit, get sick, or have to quarantine? Worse yet, this isn't just a matter of COVID-19. As of today, Seminole County currently has 90% of adult ICU beds filled and 83% of all hospital beds filled. If ICU beds are full and someone needed an ICU bed, it doesn't matter if they need it because of COVID-19 or a heart attack. If our healthcare system becomes overwhelmed because spread proceeds too quickly, more people die from all causes, not just COVID-19. I am a parent. I know how hard it is to work with a child at home. Learning can still happen with a delay and/or online. Services can be provided to children other ways. Death is permanent. Please, please, for the good of teachers, students, and the entire community, do not open schools for any in-person interaction until the CDC guidelines of decreasing COVID-19 cases for four weeks has been met. Whether you do this through delay of opening and/or virtual learning is better addressed by others. Please save lives by keeping people apart for now."
Ms. Marimus Sanchez just sent me a message that she can't hear. I don't know if the other board members are struggling to hear.
Board members, can you hear me? Nod your heads, please.
I can hear you, but it's a little bit of a struggle.
Well, we can hear you just fine.
Can you hear now, Abby?
All right, I will.
I sent a message to Jed as well, and it just became louder, so thank you. But when you move away from the mic, it's very hard.
Okay, I have four more comments to read, so I'll try to stay really close to the microphone.
Sorry, I keep getting close like that.
No, that's okay. All right, the next comment is from Madeline Moscow. And she writes, "I am a mother and friend of several amazing Seminole County teachers. These teachers are the most dedicated, caring people I know. Simply put, reopening the schools feels as though we are sending them off to fight a losing battle. Now is not the right time to fully open. Why not look at some successful counties where the most needy students and students of first-line employees can be allowed into a classroom with a small group per teacher and remote classroom instruction? This allows a safe haven but keeps the majority of kids and teachers safely distanced at home. Opening the school does not comply with the Florida Department of Health's 3C recommendations. Our schools are overcrowded, closed in space, and no matter what, will involve close contact. The virus will spread in the classrooms, people will get sick, and people will die. Can you think of any teacher whose life would be willing to sacrifice in order to reopen? I can't." The next comment comes from Rebecca Newman. And she writes, "As the school board addresses the tough decision of reopening school safety amid the terrible COVID-19 outbreak, and as you consider social distancing, cleanliness, and many new teacher responsibilities, I want to inquire about your plan for implementing state-mandated active shooter drills. How will these drills occur while considering social distancing? Will school doors now remain ajar and unlocked during the school day to account for COVID-19 touchless entry? What is the plan for students during these drills? These questions need to be carefully considered, as we must consider student safety from all angles, especially in our new pandemic model of opening schools." Thank you, Rebecca Newman. The next comment comes from Erin Nash. "I am a parent of an elementary school child, and I am scared. No amount of reorganization, distancing, extra cleaning, or temperature checks is going to make me feel any safer sending my child to school. Yes, masks should be mandatory, but we as a community are not doing so well with that now, and I'm not confident small children will follow the rules when they see adults not wearing masks. I do not believe any parent should be forced to make this choice. I did not feel this way a month ago when I completed the survey, but since then, Seminole County has had an exponential growth in COVID cases, and now our hospitals are filling up. This is so dangerous, and the situation is only getting worse. Do not open schools until we see a four weeks of decline in COVID cases, as the CDC guidelines have stated. Do not open schools until you have testing capabilities and contact tracing capacity at every school. Vote no on this plan. Delay the start of school. It is clear that Seminole County does not have the testing ability, contact tracing ability, public health budget, or authority to enforce quarantine that is needed in order to get this virus under control." And the final comment that was submitted right before we called to order is on my computer, so I'm gonna have to read it off my laptop. And the comment comes just from a SCPS parent from Sanford. And they write several questions and a couple of comments. Four questions. "Considering the recent all-time-high surge in new COVID-19 cases in Florida, will the Seminole County Public School District still force students to come to school physically? Given the high risk of contracting COVID-19 for face-to-face learning in school, will the school district allow parents to freely choose about whether their children attend school through distance learning and then provide meaningful support? As recent data shows that young people are vulnerable to the infected by COVID-19 due to their more social contacts, will the SCPS district provide for all courses distance learning support that includes, among other student supports, live streaming for classes so that students can learn more meaningfully and productively than using only Florida Virtual? Since many students have year-long course arrangements, i.e. AP classes and pre-IB classes, will SCPS district provide distance learning support for both the Fall 2020 and Spring 2021 semesters to allow students to learn productively without being interrupted by adaptation between Fall and Spring semester, even if COVID-19 cases decrease in the beginning of Spring semester?" And the two comments are, one, forcing all students to come to school physically in Fall semester would be extremely dangerous, irresponsible, and cruel due to the recent record surge in COVID-19 cases. SCPS should provide options for students to study via a fully distance learning mode. The Florida Virtual School, while allowing distance connection, cannot provide sufficient distant learning support. A better method is to livestream classes from school so that students can watch them real-time that allow other students who want to meet face-to-face to study at school. Today's technologies should be sufficient to handle that, i.e. set up an iPad to capture live video and using online platforms for assignments. Three, distant learning should be extended to students who take pre-IB programs and AP courses that are not available on virtual school now. Some underperforming students who need to close the gap should be provided with an option to come to physical school where teachers can interact with them more intimately while distance learning is still provided to other via live streaming and online platform. And finally, distant learning should be provided throughout 2021 school year, not just the Fall semester." And I believe, as of the call to order, that was all of our public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions? Okay, thank you. I have one or two. Dr. Griffin, I hope that you'll, of course, will take the input, but anyone that has a specific question could be assigned to whatever administrator can answer it. The first person that spoke talked about being a senior at Croombs, and I guess she would have to do virtual, and she wanted to be sure that she, or she could do maybe Seminole Connects. I want to be sure she can graduate from Croombs, like she said. And are all the students at Croombs working on an AA? And would that be affected in any way?
A certain portion of them are, but the ones that, the dual enrollment will also be offered through SSC, their virtual, their remote line, or through our Seminole Connect.
Okay, thank you. What will notifications look like, or will that be addressed in your presentation?
In what way?
If someone contracts it, I believe probably anyone only truly affected would receive notification. Would that be a push-out message?
That would be through Donna Walsh and the Department of Health. They have a whole protocol that they would communicate with the people they need to communicate with.
Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda would be the, Dr. Griffin, you have a first item of new business. You have a presentation.
I do. At this time, I'd like Ms. Elwood and then Dr. Cody to come up to talk a little bit about the school reopening plan. Board members, I know you've seen this for five hours, but... Madam Chair, specifically, I've asked Ms. Elwood to look at some of the major questions that came up this morning, some of the changes that were made, and some of the recommendations.
Thank you. All right, can you hear me okay? All right. So I'd like to draw your attention to the school reopening plan. This is in a Word format. Much of the information that was...
Amy, I can't hear you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So this isn't a Word format. Much of the same information has been shared across the PowerPoint slides in both work sessions, so I'm gonna draw your attention to the pages where there have been some changes or revisions or questions that you had that you thought were not addressed in the session this morning. So I'm gonna draw your attention to page seven. Under the Seminole Connect. Give you a second to get there. Well, so Seminole Connect, in the second paragraph on the bottom, we added some language there to include consideration will be given for teachers to instruct from home based on scheduling demand. So we added that because there was a lot of questions and discussion about teachers having the option to do that program from home. And then on the top of page eight, there was also a lot of questions regarding what we would do if there was an individual or classroom need for shutdown. So we did add, "In the event of an individual, classroom, school-wide, or district crisis need, Seminole Connect would act as a default instructional platform for those situations." Moving on to page 11. There was a lot of questions about the mental health supports available for both staff and students, and though we had reviewed that in the first work session, it was not addressed this morning. So we do have a very robust and in-depth mental health plan supports. We've added some team members in both social work and mental health counseling for the upcoming school year, with great support from the school board and superintendents, so thank you for that. So, and we do, we have set aside time in the master schedules at each level to suspend some instruction at the beginning of the school year to go more in-depth into those areas and provide those supports to students just at the foundational level, and then we are prepared to offer more intensive supports to staff and students as needed returning back from this crisis. We were mindful in the creation of all of these activities to put them on platforms that can be delivered to students no matter which instructional mode they choose, so they have access to these services no matter which educational option they choose. And then I'd like to address your attention to page 13 for face coverings. Member Pennick had a question about the definition of face coverings and the different types of face coverings that are available. So in paragraph two, there is a definition there. Face coverings, as used in this plan, mean a uniform piece of material that securely covers a person's nose and mouth and remains affixed in place without the use of one's hands, whether store-bought or homemade, concurrent with the Seminole County Health Department guidelines. So all the different options that you mentioned, Member Pennick, would be...
So all the different options that you mentioned, Member Pennock, would be acceptable for And then I'd like to draw your attention to page 17 as well. There was a question, I believe by Member Kraus, about high-risk employees. So we do have a section here for handling employee COVID-19-related health concerns and related leave, and also protecting vulnerable populations and working with staff who self-identify as high-risk to determine accommodations that can be made to the work environment, if Several of you had questions about student attendance, so we did add a section to reiterate student attendance, that all student attendance procedures will be addressed such that all parent guardian notes will be accepted for student illness for up to 10 days, and all student attendance awards will be discontinued for the duration of the 2021 school year. Those are the changes I have. Do you have questions about the document that I can answer? Board members, if you have any questions. Vice Chair Pennock? Member Calderon?
Just going back to your first comment, Ms. Elwood, about consideration for at-home teaching. Will that be a district decision based on priority of the health of the individual or their family members?
Dr. Calderon, we're not really wind up being more of a school decision based on their schedule and the employees that have teaching those courses, because we're going to try to keep the students with their teachers at their zone school. So the schools will work with HR for placement of those teachers.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was an HR decision. Thank you.
Member Sanchez?
One of the things that you brought up about 10 days in attendance at the end, if somebody has COVID and 10 days is not enough, what is, would that have to be a doctor's note at that point, or what are you thinking with that?
If somebody had COVID, they would probably have some medical documentation that they tested positive, and we would accept that.
So do we need to add that to that?
Ms. Beeman?
Member Sanchez, I don't believe so, as it's already covered in our attendance policy regarding the acceptance of medical documentation.
And if a child misses over 10 days because they're sick, does that mean that they could possibly fail that class, like in the regular policy that we have?
Not within excused absence.
No, Member Sanchez, in that instance, in the instance that we're talking about, the students, first of all, would, that would be an excused absence and would have the opportunity to make up any of the missed work.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to clarify that. And one thing I wanted to add, Amy, thank you for everything that you just clarified. If a teacher is out, subplans and seating charts, I spoke to Dr. Griffin about this, or you have to have a substitute in there, or, you know, it's, who knows what's going to happen? And I really want to see subplans that are there with seating charts and everything and stuff for emergency situations. When I'm going into the classrooms, I'm not seeing that, and I really would like to see that. I don't want a babysitting service. I want to make sure that the subs that are there know what they need to do with the Seminole Connect and everything else that goes on, and how important it is that they know what they're doing, so we need to make sure that our substitutes are trained properly in order to do this, distance learning, if that's the way we go. Or should I say Seminole Connect? Sorry.
Ms. Sanchez, I agree, and I think a better place to put that is in our employee handbook. I've addressed that with Mr. Carnes, because it's not only for this-related illness, but for really for any illness, there should be appropriate substitute plans.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kraus?
Yes, and I'm sorry, let me make sure I'm not on mute. Okay. I have three issues. We talked about the incentives for students are removed. I believe we also have incentive for teachers, bus drivers, and support staff. We didn't talk about that. I don't know, I guess Attorney Beeman, do you have a comment about that?
And I believe Member Kraus said that is a matter of our collective bargaining agreement and would have to be addressed accordingly.
Okay, if I could flag that to talk about at a later meeting, because we do need to discuss that, I think. I know it would be tempting to want to come in to work so that you earn that bonus. Secondly, could you go back to page 17? I did not have this, the changes printed. I'm in Indiana, so I don't have a printer available. Could, Amy, would you be willing just to read over those real quickly into the record?
Sure. Which section, the whole, both sections?
Four, seven, and four, eight, I guess, are the changes, the high-risk, yes.
Okay, yeah, and to reiterate, those were not changes that was in the plan already, but it was a question that was asked in the work session today. So, so four, eight, based on currently available information and clinical expertise, individuals considered high-risk for severe illness from COVID-19 are people of all ages with underlying medical conditions, particularly if not well-controlled, including people with chronic lung disease or moderate to severe asthma, people who have serious heart conditions and transplantation, immune deficiencies, poorly controlled HIV or AIDS.
Who live with people that have these at-risk conditions as well. Are they prioritized at all? Does that language need to be included for our staff members?
We can add that. I think HR will prioritize based on the people who have these underlying issues. We could ask HR to include, so, Ms. Kraus, you're saying that anyone who lives with someone who has some of these, because some of these are not, it may have to be a whole separate category, I think, that if you're talking about family members who live with people that have some, have chronic illness, is what, that's what you're referring to?
Well, yes, because if the employee becomes exposed and they take it home to their family at risk, who has at-risk conditions, you know? If it were a, an in-person teacher, staff member, dining service, bus driver, whomever it may be, and they take it home to their family who is at risk, I feel like they, and that probably is a lot of us, that have people, I don't know how you hierarchy the level of concern. I have a son with asthma. It would be very detrimental for him to contract COVID. So I don't know how we do that to accommodate the ability for those employees to work from home, if possible.
I wonder if the change, I mean, the very last line, district schools will work with staff who self-identify or reside with high-risk individuals to determine if requested accommodations can be made to the work environment. That still gives them flexibility, but still keeps it on the radar.
Perfect.
Okay, we'll make that change.
Thank you for addressing that.
Thank you. Member Sanchez, you have another question?
Yes, one of them was about, sorry, I didn't know you were going to ask me right now real quick, but eCampus for substitutes is not, substitutes aren't able to log into that. So either we have partners that share in and they can log them in so they can get into the assignment, so they can do their assignments for the kids that do face-to-face. I'd like to make sure that we have that somewhere, that we have some employee help them log in so they can get into the eCampus or have some extra training on that part. Also, what is the temperature, the standard temperature that we are, I believe we had the slides earlier today, but I didn't see the temperature, the standard temperature that we are looking for for students to either go home, or parents, or employees, bus drivers, so on and so forth, and what does that look like and stuff?
We have a standard temperature for sending students home that's already in board policy, I believe, Ms. Beeman?
I'm not certain that it's in board policy. It is 100 degrees, and so I think it's actually in the protocols that have been used, and so they, it wouldn't be part of the policies, but, you know, part of the procedures to implement that. And it's not in the language of the proposed plan as I'm, you know, going through the three pages here, but that's the ongoing procedure that has been used. Member Sanchez?
Yes. So, you know, I know that, you know, fever, chills, and, you know, we're checking the students, and we're checking the teachers, and all of our employees, you know, are we going to chart those temperatures down and keep log on them and make sure that we're keeping track of everything, that we're, you know, checking in the kids on a daily basis, as well as any teacher or employee that is working on school grounds as well?
Going back to your first question, Ms. Elwood, what I would suggest in 4.2, where it says fever or chills, in parentheses next to fever, put 100 degrees, that's the...
That's been used.
Yeah, and I have some flexibility to tweak this afterwards if we have to, but we'll put that in as a filler.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then your second question, I think we're going to adhere pretty closely to what we heard Donna Walsh and Dr. Hussey say today. If they are students who don't normally have a chronic illness and they are showing these signs, that's a very different situation than students who do it all the time. So I think our schools do a pretty good job keeping track of the students who do have illnesses, and I think the trick this year is going to be differentiating appropriately and making sure that the needs get taken care of.
And then last question with that, let's say a child isn't feeling well, are we, you know, usually do in elementary school, a buddy system? Are we going to have another student walk another student down to the clinic? Or are we going to call for somebody or have a teacher, you know, walk? Because what happens in the buddy system, especially the little ones, and I taught all grade, so they would hold hands and walk together, taking each other to the clinic, and that concerns me.
Yeah, maybe we'll recommend that the protocol be the teacher call to the office, and somebody with a mask and gloves come and gets the student and take them to the special COVID area.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We talked about that with administrators, to do that for symptomatic students. So Ms. Elwood, I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done over the last couple of months.
Yes, thank you.
And, you know, that's a broader period of time. I know that after we meet and after we give you all our input and suggestions, and then you have about an hour to turn it around, and we're all hounding you for the final product so we can be prepared too. Thank you so very much. It's so very thorough and easy to understand.
Next is Dr. Cody. Over the instructional models.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Griffin, thank you for this opportunity to share again the instructional options for the 2021 school year. Prior to doing so, we shared at the work session earlier today that the Florida Department of Education has required districts who are interested in offering any type of model other than brick-and-mortar, face-to-face, or Seminole County Virtual School to submit to the Department of Education a request to approve an innovative learning environment that they and we have been referencing as remote learning. And so, over the last week, since we've received the emergency order from Commissioner Corcoran, staff has participated in three webinars with the department and received guidance on what should be included in the optional innovative reopening plan. In particular, there are five assurances, and again, we went over that this morning, that's all available for view. The first assurance, and I'd like to read this, Dr. Griffin, if I may, Ms. Almond, the first assurance, assurance one, upon reopening in August, the district will assure that all brick-and-mortar schools are open at least five days per week for all students subject to advice and orders of the Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, executive order 20-149, and subsequent executive orders. And so, when our model was designed, as you can see on the screen, we started with that face-to-face option, and that is assurance number one for the plan that we must submit. The face-to-face option is traditional school, similar to what occurred in all of our lifetimes and during this past school year prior to March. And all of the models that we are offering to our board include standards-based instruction by certified teachers. We understand the importance of our students having the opportunity to learn their standards and to be able to progress from grade to grade. The distance learning model that occurred during the fourth quarter, we, again, we thank everyone who very quickly moved into that model, but we weren't as competent of the standards-based instruction. Not anybody's fault. Everyone did awesome. But now we're in a different situation, and we have to be sure that all of our children have access to instruction on the standards. So I'm going to go back to face-to-face, and as you can see, in the face-to-face model, students have a regular school day. If they're eligible for bus transportation, they'll have a bus opportunity in the morning, a bus opportunity at the end of the school day. The one addition to, prior to spring break this year, is that families must adhere to Seminole County Public Schools' health and safety guidelines on campus and at school restaurants, activities, and while riding school buses. So that would be the change for families as they're thinking about coming back for a face-to-face model, should that be accepted by the board. The next instructional model is Seminole Connect, and Seminole Connect is very different from the distance learning model that occurred during the fourth quarter. Families who select Seminole Connect will keep their children at home, and the children will follow the same academic schedule as they would if they were in face-to-face. So the teacher will be teaching during the day, throughout the day, so that the children can access the standards that they're required to learn. Students will be, as much as possible, assigned to the same teacher that they would get if they were in a brick-and-mortar option. So we've heard that a lot of families want to stay connected to their schools. They love their schools. They know their teachers. And this option is designed to keep the children at those schools. If they're at a choice school, if they're in a magnet program, a program of emphasis, and they choose Seminole Connect, they'll still be aligned with that program. Pre-IB, IB, AP courses, all of that will keep them aligned with their teachers. This particular option asks that families remain for one quarter, and that's really for, again, instructional continuity, so teachers can work with the students, make sure they're making modifications, have grades for them. At the end of the quarter, if that... At the end of the quarter, if that is no longer working for the family, or the pandemic circumstances have changed, then we welcome them back to their brick and mortar school. We may not always have options at Seminole County Virtual because of some of their enrollment guidelines, but we'll always do our best to listen and accommodate families as we can. Seminole County Virtual School is another at-home learning model. The difference with Seminole County Virtual School is a different curriculum is used, and families can select when they really want their children to do that work. So if your family doesn't want to have their high school student engaging with their high school teacher at 7:10 a.m., then Seminole County Virtual is probably better for you. Because in Seminole Connect, class is going to start for the students at home at the same time as it will start for the students who are in class. And obviously, the schedule has to be built around the face-to-face model, the students that are on campus. We do ask at Seminole County Virtual School for families to complete a semester. And the reason for that is because those courses are designed to be completed in the semester, and the funding model is aligned with that particular course. So if students are in and out, then we're not going to be able to pick them up because the curriculum's a little different. And we also have concerns about our funding model. And then finally, we, again, we have read all of the emails. We certainly had many meetings with a wide range of stakeholders, including our awesome reopening committee that did just Yeoman's job of researching and listening and going to our schools. And so a hybrid model allows families to put together a unique schedule. It's not an à la carte model where you can go in and pick and say, "Well, I want to come in at 8:30 and take English, and then I want to go home and, you know, take math." It can't be that way. We have to meet the needs of our students. We're bound by statutory requirements for the amount of time that we have to instruct our students. We must take attendance for our students. So there are many criteria that go into creating this model. So for a hybrid at the elementary level, if a family wants some face-to-face and some at home, then they should consider the face-to-face and the Seminole County Virtual model. Seminole Connect and face-to-face are an overwhelming expectation for elementary schools. At elementary, one teacher, or sometimes at the upper levels, two teachers are responsible for all the curriculum. At the secondary level, we have more flexibility. We can allow students to blend face-to-face, Seminole Connect, and Seminole County Virtual School. And again, we've been doing that secondary model for a number of years now to meet students' academic needs. They've taken online courses, even at our universities, if that's where they are with their academic program. So it's important to understand that all of our students with disabilities, English language learners, have an opportunity to participate in all of these options. And as we always do, the IEPs, the gifted EPs, the English Language Learner Plans will be reviewed to make sure that we are supporting those students who may need face-to-face. And we heard that from some of the comments, and we agree with that. Occupational therapy, sometimes, not always, is better face-to-face. And so we've made those accommodations during the fourth quarter, even over the summer for students, and will continue to do so. So for parents, and we all, the team that I work with, we're all parents. Some of us grandparents now, and those little ones, as you can well imagine, are so close to our hearts. We know the difficulty for these decisions. And so what we're suggesting is that you ask yourself a question. And we've got a decision tree here to help with those conversations as you decide what is best for your family. And quite honestly, you're the only ones that can do that. We'll provide options. We'll provide support. Again, not everything for everyone. We'll do as best we can to accommodate families. So the first question that we suggest you ask is, "Do you want your student to take some or all classes on campus?" If the answer is yes, for whatever reason you have, then you might want to consider face-to-face. If that's what meets your family's needs, and you understand the health and safety requirements for our campus, then that would be an option for you to consider very seriously. If you, as we heard in one of the board submissions, are comfortable with your child coming on campus part of the day, and then maybe going home and doing Seminole County Virtual at the elementary level, or at the secondary level, Seminole County Virtual or Seminole Connect, then that would be a model that might work for your family. In doing so, any transportation other than at the beginning of school or at the end of the school day would be the responsibility of the family. And I'm sure families recognize that. If as a family, you decide, "No, I don't want my child on campus at all right now", then we would suggest you consider Seminole Connect or Seminole County Virtual School. The other option for secondary, and this is only a secondary option, as I shared earlier, is that you could have a combination of Seminole Connect and Seminole County Virtual School. Both of those options would require your student to stay at home. And they would be courses that you could access. I know Dr. Griffin and Mr. Goddard are working very, very hard to make sure IB students are not in any jeopardy of not completing their program. I know board members are very clear about our graduation rates and what we do for our students when they leave Seminole County's public schools with their diploma. And we are committed to working as hard as we can to ensure that those programs continue. The advanced placement courses, the dual enrollment courses. We're putting as much as we can in both areas so that families and students can continue that educational journey that they've started on. Families, for scheduling purposes, it's important for you to make a decision and register by July 24th at noon. Doing so will allow us to give you the option that you may prefer as we get more and more requests and work with our principals, work with our teachers. We hope we can meet everybody's requests, but we're going to prioritize and get people in that we can. Certainly, as the situation changes prior to the start of school, we're open to families saying, "You know, I thought I wanted Seminole County Virtual School, but now I'm thinking Seminole Connect might meet my family's needs better." We want you to talk with the school about that, and we'll do everything we can to address that need. And then for our elective and special area classes, again, at the elementary level, there will be modifications for health and safety at both levels, as we all expect and know should be done. Depending on the facility, students may have an opportunity for a special area in a different location. I know that our principals, both at elementary and secondary, are looking at weather permitting outside spaces. We want the children to run. We want the athletics to continue. We want those fine arts to keep going. And we're working hard to make sure we offer them, but in a very responsible way, to the best of our ability. We have challenges with some particular programs, like culinary and others. And we're working through that right now. And we'll keep our board informed of what we can do for those particular courses. At the elementary level in particular, with PE and art and music, we sometimes have one teacher serving 800 students. And so the Teaching and Learning Department is providing lessons that families would be able to use if that doesn't fit within the schedule. So we're going to address that. And those lessons will be by teachers certified in those areas. We also want our principals to work with their executive directors. If there's an activity or a class with more than 50 students, and you heard that wonderful young lady speak to all of you about what fine arts means to her and many of her peers. And so, yes, we want Mr. Goddard to be involved in conversations about how those students are going to be supported for their extracurricular activities that they're engaged in.
Board members, any questions? Vice Chair Pennock?
I do have one clarifying question, please. July 24th is the deadline for all parents to make the choice for which model of education they want to pick. What happens if a... One, just walk through briefly, not how we do the pick, but how are we going to be notified? And what happens if I, as the parent, do not make that deadline? What's the default?
Ms. Pennock?
I want that to be very clearly heard to our parents and everyone on this call. What happens if you do not make your choice by July 24th?
The default will be face-to-face.
Okay. And are we getting a phone call? Are we getting an email? Are we getting both? Are we getting... I have three kids. Am I getting three emails, three phone calls, six methods of communication? I just want to understand.
After you make your choice.
Before. How am I getting notified that this is the email that I need to not disregard?
You will, after registration on July 24th, you will receive a confirmation for the program that you selected. Then the other reality that's going to happen, all of us know, there are some families who, for many different reasons, arrive at school the first day, third day, and so on. Where we have space, we will try to accommodate other than just face-to-face. It's what we do usually every school year anyway for families who arrive after the time.
Okay. Clarify. Am I getting... When we vote tonight on this plan, am I getting an email tomorrow?
Yes.
To say, "You need to register. Mrs. Pennock, here are your three kids. You need to register your choices by July 24th." Here's the deal.
Yes. Upon board approval, I've already prepared a video that we can redo if we need to at the conclusion of this meeting. And every family will receive a registration form with the deadline clearly marked on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remember Calderon?
Yes, I had a few comments/questions coming up in today's work session. I suggested some sort of method of organized communication for our community to ask questions to us, whether it be through a portal, or who should be their contact. We had some very good questions tonight brought up in the school board meeting. But again, those were just a few parents or a few teachers. And I think the stress in the community right now is more of uncertainty and not having the answers to their questions. So I want to try to get in front of this, to have people calm down a little bit. So if there is an organized way that we can accept questions from the public, the staff, you know, perhaps a lot of these decisions, I know, are school-based. So if there is a contact at the schools or through the executive director, I think people just need to know who to direct their questions to get the most timely answer. I think people will feel a lot more comfortable. Second suggestion is... I'm sorry, Dr. Griffin?
If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and interrupt. We had this conversation right before I came down. What we are doing with the emails is to try to organize, because we're all receiving a lot, and they're good questions. So Stephanie Jackson, anything that's health-related really needs to be handled by a medical professional. So she, I've asked my team not to answer medical-related questions. And a lot of the questions we're receiving are really personal emails from families who are dealing with different things. And then Ms. Jackson will deal with the Health Department if she needs to, or one of the hospitals that we work with to handle all of those. Elementary, she'll go to the elementary executive directors. Middle to Ms. Faison, high school to Mr. Goddard. If you're not sure where to send it, send it to me, and we will do it that way. Then we're really thinking, as far as a portal or a depository, it's probably going to be more about the health-related questions. And then if we see similar questions popping up, but a lot of the questions coming in about scheduling are very specific to their child. And quite frankly, what's going to happen, the executive directors will probably work with, not even the principal, probably an assistant principal or SAM, to figure out the scheduling needs of that specific student. So utilize, and you know, I've been trying to take all of the email for the executive director, we've had a lot of people in and out. But we started yesterday giving the executive directors so they can work with their principals. This is all new to the admin. I'm going to be meeting with all the admin tomorrow at 9:00 to lay all this out. But the closer we can get these answers to the schools, the better. If the schools can't answer them, of course, they'll come back to us.
Great. Thank you so much. Second suggestion or comment is, is there a way that we could perhaps do a very detailed video on the difference between Seminole Connect and Seminole County Virtual School? In that I know a lot of families were not able to attend the board meeting tonight, and they do have access to the PowerPoints, but I think it needs more of a discussion. So whether it be an email that can, a video that can be live. So when Mrs. Pennock gets those three emails tomorrow morning, and she doesn't know really the difference between those models because she hasn't spent all day with us today, I want to be really transparent and upfront so mistakes aren't made in choosing. Or could we go back to what we did in March, Dr. Griffin, when we had those Facebook Live sessions, when we were talking about some of the virtual, and we were talking about whatever the topic of the day is? I just want to be able to communicate in the best forms that our families are able to accept that communication.
Certainly, I agree. I think that the more information we get out there, the better. I love the idea of doing a Facebook Live. I know PTA is doing one, which I said we would participate. But I think we need to do one here also. Just, and maybe at a few different times, and maybe one really focused on elementary, one on middle, one on high school for parents that have questions. I think that's probably the best way to do it. And we've gotten better at it. You know, we did, I think, seven or eight this summer. The first one was a little shaky. But I think we got better and better, having somebody moderate the questions and take care of that. So I think we can set up three Facebook Lives to begin with, elementary, middle, and high school.
Okay, thank you. And my third and last comment, if I might, Madam Chair, is Mrs. Pennock is going to get three texts, three emails, three phone calls tomorrow because we already have her as a registered family. We have a lot of people that have moved to the community, perhaps from other regions of the country, that don't know that they should register to make that decision. And I know we do a very good job on putting things out on social media. But if people aren't even registered yet, they don't know to follow us on social media. I'm hopeful that tonight, there's a lot of TV stations or radio stations that can put a plea out there for us that if people are considering coming to Seminole County Public that if people are considering coming to Seminole County Public Schools, this is your chance to choose now. You need to register your students. And maybe we can put it on all the marquees of all of our schools. I think we've talked about it for months since March. And I think a lot of families were trying to wait to make those kind of decisions until they saw what happened with COVID. And they might be making the assumption, well, COVID is still in the community, so I'm sure we don't need to register for schools yet. So I want to make sure that we're in front of it any way possible. You know, I don't know if we reach out to the religious organizations, if, you know, any kind of group that we can to help us get the word out. I'd appreciate it. And that's my last comment. Thank you.
Dr. Calderon, great ideas. And I think, like you said, a lot of people aren't going to naturally reach out. The one thing I was going to cover tomorrow with the principals at all the schools is to get something up on the marquees, because we also have prepared paper pencil copy of registration forms. Because not everybody has access. Not everybody is a current student. So if they show up at a school to register, there'll be a paper for them to fill out. Or if they see the sign on the marquee, hopefully that'll encourage them to come in. And we'll certainly get it out on all our usual social media sites and so on.
Great. Thank you so much.
Member Sanchez?
Hi. Thank you so much, Dr. Cody, for sharing all the different models with us. One question I had about elementary school. With the classes switching and how we departmentalize, will that still be continued? And what would that look like if a child decides, or a parent decides that they are doing the Seminole Connect, and they have two different teachers? Are they still going to be able to do that? And we'll have two teachers, one teaching the LA English Language Arts, the Social Studies, where it's integrated together, because you know how I feel about Social Studies, and then Science and Math as well?
Yes. And we're working with the executive directors and the principals. And yes, those families can take advantage of Seminole Connect. And if that family at some point decides, perhaps in January, they want to go to Brick and Mortar, they'll have those same pair of teachers. As far as moving from class to class, we've talked about perhaps the teacher moving. There's different ways to do it. We want to work with our teachers and our principals to define the health and safety protocols for that particular activity. I think, Ms. Sanchez, you bring up such an important point because everything we're doing depends on what the families select. So if more families select Seminole Connect, that gives us a different opportunity. If more select Brick and Mortar, then that presents another opportunity. So that's why that July 24th date is very important to us. And obviously, not all families will register by then. So we'll do the best we can with the information that we have, and then we'll adjust as new information comes into us.
Thank you. It's so hard to hear you. I'm sorry, I don't know why, but thank you. And then, you know, with the... One of the questions that one of our parents had asked in one of the letters, they, or one of the teachers, actually, a couple of teachers, about Marzano and Kagan and evaluations. And, you know, how we're hands-on, teachers are hands-on and things like that. Well, if they're doing the kids, working with the children at home, wanting to see that these children have the manipulatives in their hands or a pickup station where they can get the manipulatives, or, you know, the cutouts that they need possibly for pre-K or VPK or kindergarten first, second grade, that there's a drop-off pickup area for those, will we be having that accessibility to do that? So they can work with the manipulatives and Seminole Connect and all those different things?
Well, obviously, we have to maintain health and safety standards first. But our teachers have been very creative in figuring out, even when we were in the fourth quarter, distance learning, how to help our youngest learners use manipulatives because that is how they process information and learn concepts. Dr. Griffin, as far as teacher evaluation, if you wouldn't mind to respond to that?
I think, you know, all of us learned a lot fourth quarter. And I think teacher evaluation is going to be different. I think it's very different to evaluate a teacher who is teaching via a screen and WebEx as opposed to a teacher who's face-to-face. And even our face-to-face teachers are going to be using less cooperative learning and so on. So with everything else that we're doing, when we talk to the administrators tomorrow, it's one of the items, common sense and compassion. But we also want common sense and compassion towards our students. There is an expectation that we interact with our students. And so it's going to be a different mode. And quite frankly, I think post-COVID, we're still going to have a lot of requests from now on for parents who want a more flexible schedule for their lifestyle and things like that. So I think we're going to learn a lot. But teacher evaluation will evolve to meet the needs, the best needs of our students, and to fairly evaluate our teachers. But it's going to look different for sure from here on out.
Thank you. And I know you have such a great relationship with the DOE. And I would love to see if you, as well as anybody else, could reach out and talk about possibly postponing some of the EOCs if we need to, or the lovely FSA, and taking that money and giving it to our teachers. I'm just going to keep saying that, sorry.
I'm not afraid to bring it up.
Give us enough money.
Not afraid to bring it up at all.
No, I mean, all they can say is no. But we really need that money for our teachers and our faculty and paras and bus drivers and custodians and secretaries. I can keep going.
They know how we feel about FSA pre-COVID.
Yes, exactly. And the vocational programs with ePathways, are we going to take a walk through that as well? And have possibly Dr. Weisong do a video along with that, a walk in the life of what it's like for the Seminole Connect students? You know, make these virtual tours of what it's like to walk through the life of, you know, the face-to-face, the Seminole Connect, Seminole County Virtual, you know, our two hams that we have up there, Boyd and Mike Godro. We'd love for you guys to be students and teachers to walk us through those. Walton, you can too, or any of y'all. I think that would be fun. So they can see what it's like in the day of all that. So the parents can make the best educated decision. And so can our teachers, as well as our bus drivers and everybody, so they can make the best decision for their children.
And I think...
Extremely important.
I think what's, you know, going to be the greatest challenge is this is not a cookie cutter approach. And every course in Seminole Connect is not going to look exactly the same. I think what we weren't real clear on this morning is that we've only ordered 10 full-class webcams. And I think there's concern out there. We're going to be running these in all the classrooms and all the lessons being recorded and so on. The vast majority of our teachers are going to be interacting over their computers via WebEx or Google Classroom, or whatever the platform is. So the privacy is going to be there. I think we spent a lot of time answering questions about the whole-class webcam experience. Some of the products have all different names, but we've ordered 10. And there is a need for that, I think specifically in IB. But there are definite privacy issues. And we've done very, very well with the computer and the platforms that we have using. That's what the vast majority of our students are going to be experiencing. But we do have the capability, where we need it, to have a full-blown class webcam.
Super. Thank you. And then the dual-language program, will that still be available on Seminole Connect?
Yes.
Fabulous. That's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. And then, just to reiterate, we are still planning on talking about August 24th as the opening date. And are we still looking at that date as a beginning date? And then working around trying to figure out how to make sure that all of our employees get paid? And, you know, take maybe workdays out or early release days and less PDs, professional development for people that are not teachers or employees that don't understand what that is. I know we speak in acronyms all the time, so I apologize for that.
Ms. Sanchez, because it's such an important item, I actually have a second recommendation after the plan for us to talk specifically about calendar. We worked real fast on that one for you.
All right. Thank you so much. And then EOCs testing, and we think we mentioned that. So postponement of that, you'll talk to our lovely legislators or governor or commissioners. Thank you.
Member Kraus?
Dr. Griffin?
Member Kraus?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Dr. Griffin, I think you are a mind reader or telepathic. My question's related to the security of the online lessons. And would children be filmed in this if they're doing an experiment? Or also the impact that a teacher could be giving a lesson and someone recorded and clipped out parts that may be out of context or may cause detriment to their reputation? I don't know what the security protocols we have. I know that WebEx has been very secure for us, but I don't think we're using that on all levels.
Yeah, the area we have to learn more about are these full-class webcams. That's what, when you have read about privacy issues, that's where it has come from. I can assure you, IS is working on that. And July 28th, I've asked IS to actually address the board specifically about privacy issues related to these 10 classroom webcams. I think it's going to be an issue, especially if we're looking at AP Chem, AP Physics, IB, using those for those courses so students can actually see their teachers teaching. But that is, I don't even think there's going to be a webcam classroom approach in elementary or middle. It's going to be primarily for the high school singletons that we need to get kids through for graduation. Elementary and middle will be primarily what we have grown accustomed to with a much improved curriculum and more, an expectation of interaction of teachers and students and so on. The way the vast majority of our teachers interacted with the kids on the computers fourth quarter.
Okay. That's excellent. I don't know that this is the appropriate location to ask two other quick questions I had. If a parapro wanted to work from home, like say they were doing small-group lessons or supporting their teachers with, like Abby was talking about, manipulatives or cutouts or something specific, would that be an opportunity for, you know, if they were at risk or their family were at risk? Could we allow parapros to work from home?
We actually did fourth quarter. And I think there may be some cases, for example, where a power, a para works with small groups of students throughout the day where that they could be scheduled to do some tutoring and assistance and so on. We're going to try to, where possible, accommodate those type of things.
Okay. And then finally, I also have concerns with housekeeping. That doesn't fit in here. We'll talk after this, Dr. Cody. Excellent job in presenting and updating the reopening models. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cody. My questions have all been answered by other school members asking them. So, Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation, please?
I do, Madam Chair. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the SCPS 2021 School Reopening Plan, including all identified instructional models therein, and authorize the superintendent to make all modifications as may be necessary in response to the Florida Department of Education requirements, CDC and/or DOH guidelines, state and local requirements, or other circumstances associated with the health, safety, and welfare of students and employees related to the global pandemic caused by COVID-19. Additionally, approval of the SCPS 2021 School Reopening Plan includes authorization for the superintendent to submit the plan or portions thereof to the Florida Department of Education for approval and to initiate rulemaking, including emergency rulemaking, procedures to develop, amend, or repeal any policies and/or procedures necessary for the full implementation of the plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Somewhere.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I do, I have some discussion. I love so many opportunities in Seminole Select Program. I think that it just offers, it's like the answer for us. Unfortunately, I am not in favor of face-to-face instruction, and I will be voting no because we are seeing untold incidents and exposures to COVID. And even one student, one teacher that succumbs to this, it is on us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? A member Sanchez?
I know that you just mentioned, Dr. Griffin, about the school time. But you do mention that it would start on August 24th? Or did I miss that part? Or we would postpone the date?
We're going to bring, I'm going to bring a second recommendation after we vote on this to just talk about the calendar.
All right. I just want to say that I'm on record that I'm disappointed in our governor lack of leadership in the sense that they're putting us through this. What is it going to take? Someone to die? And it's like an intersection. You know, how many people have to die in an intersection before they put a traffic light up? This is extremely serious. And it scares the daylights out of me. I know 10 people that die. And my twin sister had it, my daughter had it, my son-in-law had it. This is not a joking matter. And I know some people think it is, but it's not.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to encourage everyone to have, again, compassion and grace with the differences that we have in our opinions and our beliefs as we go through this. We don't always agree with each other. What works for your family does not work for my family and does not work for your neighbor's family. And I ask that you please not shame each other, but let's come together as a community and support each other. We need each other more now than ever. We need to support our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers, our kids. The last thing we need to do is to shame a kiddo that's standing at a bus, waiting for a bus, because that's his only option. I ask that you just support each other as we go through this. This is a tough, tough place that we are in. We are, we have been given this by an act of... An act of nothing, nothing other than, nothing that we can describe. And we need to rise above our anger and our negativity and come together as the Seminole County that I know that we are and that we all appreciate living in. And let's prove that we are the best county, regardless of what your neighbor does differently than what you do.
Thank you. Ms. Marimus, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. By roll call vote, what is your vote, Vice Chairman Pennock?
Yes.
Member Calderon?
Yes.
Member Sanchez?
I'm not happy with it, but yes, because I know what's going to happen if I don't.
Christine Kraus?
No.
Member Kraus?
Can you not hear me?
I'm sorry, no, I did not hear your voice. Member Kraus?
No. I vote no.
Thank you. Chairman Almond?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you. Dr. Griffin, as to the second item of new business, you have a presentation, please.
Yes, board members. Such an important topic on this calendar. I thought we just needed to separate out from the previous discussion. Lots of options. We moved very, very quickly, listened to you very quickly. But also, we received a lot of feedback very quickly, and primarily based around payroll, planning, and the logistics of changing the calendar. So I'm going to ask in a few minutes, Mr. Russi and Mr. Carnes. So I tried to put together a few thoughts. And one scenario would be... So I tried to put together, um, a few thoughts, and I, one, um, scenario would be to take, to keep, to keep our payroll structure in place, to keep our semesters in place, to end school on the same day, yet give our teachers the additional planning time that they need. So I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Carnes and Mr. Rusty to present, I've asked them to take three planning days scheduled during the school year, two October days and one January day, and front load those to August 10th, 11th, and 12th. So that would make planning a full seven days for our teachers, um, to, to work on the things that they need to work on. There's a lot to do in a small amount of time, and would give our administrators a few, a few additional days for scheduling. So I'd like you to look at that, and I'm, and if we, if we have other suggestions and we want to change, we may take a, a different recommendation right at this meeting and work on it from here. So I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. Rusty and Mr. Carnes.
Good evening, Board Members and, uh, Dr. Griffin, and, um, thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. And, Dr. Griffin, as you spoke, um, we put together a calendar, uh, to present to the Board tonight, but before I do that, if it's okay, I'm going to share my content, and I'm going to share the, our current calendar, um, so you can see the difference in the two. My screen should come up.
It's coming, Mark.
Okay, you should see it now, and, and this is our current Board-approved calendar. It was adopted April 23rd, 2019, for the 2020, 2021 school year. And Board Members, uh, I'd like to point out, in August, you notice that the pre-plan starts Tuesday, August 4th, and runs through Friday, the 7th, and then students would start attendance on the 10th. For teachers, their first paycheck, and for most of our, is their first paycheck would be August the 7th, that first Friday. It would be a .4 paycheck, but it would be their first check. So that's the first thing to look at. If you also look at October, this is where there's going to be another change. If you notice, in our calendar, we normally provide a teacher workday at the end of each quarter, and we also have a professional development day, a district-wide PD day that's built into our calendar. So the end of the first quarter is October the 9th, that's that orangish color, and then the 12th is the teacher workday, and the 13th is the district-wide PD day, the 14th is the beginning of the second quarter. And then the other change I'm going to, that's going to happen, and I'm going to scroll down just a little bit for you to see in January. In January, the teacher workday for the second quarter falls to January the 4th, you'll see it there in blue, and then the beginning of the third quarter is the 5th. So what Dr. Griffin's asked us to do is to provide a, um, calendar that would move some of these workdays to the beginning of the calendar to provide additional plan time, and to also, um, change the start date. And I'm going to share a calendar that shows the changes made. So if you look at the calendar that just popped up, this is a draft calendar presented today, and you'll notice August is still starting with the teachers on August the 4th. Teachers would still receive their .4 check on August the 7th as planned, but you'll notice the 10th, 11th, and 12th are now in blue. That means their planning time, their planned days, and the students would begin the year on the 13th. So we've lost three student attendance days, days there. But this is where we're going to pick those up, and I'm going to refer you back to October. If you remember, in October, I said the 12th and the 13th, the 12th was a teacher workday, the 13th was a district-wide PD day. Now on this calendar, it shows the 12th being the beginning of the second quarter. Those are both now student attendance day. The second quarter still ends on the 18th of December, but you'll notice in January, 4th is no longer a teacher workday. It's a student attendance day, and that is the beginning of the third quarter, and that's where we get back our third day that we've taken at the beginning of the year. And I know one of the questions would be, what, you know, how does that impact, um, the quarters? I'm going to scroll down just a little bit, and you'll see the first quarter is going to be August 13th to October the 9th, and that's going to be 41 days. If I compare that to the calendar that's already Board-approved, that's three days less. Our current calendar is 44 days in the first quarter, so we've lost those three days. The second quarter, October 12th to December 19th, is now 45 days. In our previously, in our current Board-adopted calendar, it's currently 43 days. So the first semester in our current calendar for 2021, there's 87 days. In this proposal, it's 86 days. The second semester, you'll notice January 4th, remember, we added a day there that would have been a teacher workday, is now a student attendance day. So now the third quarter is 48 days instead of 47. The fourth quarter has not changed, so now we're going to have 94 days in the second semester compared to previously, it was 93 days. So it gets us our 180 student attendance days, and it adds these three days at the beginning of the year. It would be additional plan time that I knew the Board discussed during the work session today.
Board Members, do you have questions? Vice Chair Pennock? Thank you, Ms. Rusty.
I, I guess, is this the best that we can do? And I think that's, I know that's a very broad question, but...
It's not. I mean, we could, I mean, you have full authority over the calendar, and if you wanted to do it a different way, we can. Um, few things to keep in mind, um, teachers asked for some additional planning, um, so that that would increase us from four to seven. Families, we're planning on schools starting the 10th, so I don't think it's too disruptive to push it off, um, to the 13th. And our semesters are, are, they look a little off-kilter, but second semester, remember, we do quite a bit of testing. But, um, Ms. Pennick, we can, we can definitely do more. You heard some ideas at the work session today. The Board wanted the students to return the 31st. We can work on the schedule for that, the 24th, we can work on the schedule for that, but there's implications for, um, for any calendar decision that you make. We, we, we worked very, very quickly after the work session, just based on, um, some, you know, some quick feedback. And, Ms. Almond, um, if Mr. Smith is comfortable, maybe after the Board Members make their comments, I did chat with Mr. Smith about this also, if that's okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
I, I guess maybe my, you know, we always hear a lot of the feedback from parents, why do you start on a Thursday? Walk us, walk us, just walk us through that. The, the theory of why we start on a Thursday.
Well, you know, it's, I think ideally in everybody's mind, it's always nice to start on a Monday. Um, I can tell you from working at schools, having a few days before the first full week, um, gives you a chance to work out the kinks. I think this year in particular, um, we're going to need that weekend, the 15th and the 16th. Um, our plan looks very, very organized, and, and it is, but I, I can tell you that the implementation is going to be a bumpy ride to get everybody scheduled, to get all the technology working, to get the classes balanced, um, there'll be a lot of schedule changes. So sometimes it's easier if you just have those first couple of days to kind of get things going. It works, it works anyway because we've, we've, we've started on every day of the week. I think the strangest was a few years ago, we had to start on a Friday, if I remember, and that was a challenge to explain to everybody.
Thank you. Member Calderon?
I guess the discussions that we have to have as a Board is, I, I think this solution is a good one, based on the feedback and, and input that I know I personally gave, that I, I felt we needed to give teachers and staff more time for training, for understanding new rules and regulations, if you would, so thank you for doing that. Um, and, Ms. Pennick, to your question on starting on a Thursday, we've done that through the years, and actually, we've gotten more positive feedback of not starting on a Monday because we had the opportunity, families did, after meeting with the teachers, to spend the weekend to go out and get what other manipulatives they might need on the, for the classes, rather than going out on a school night late, you know, to purchase any items that are needed. I'm glad it's not a Wednesday. The only opportunity we had a few years ago was starting on a Wednesday. The bus schedule is different because it's a shorter day, and, um, some families forgot, so we had some transportation opportunities, so I'm glad it's not a Wednesday. Um, I'm glad we didn't take, what I, some feedback that I've gotten from teachers this afternoon in between the two meetings is making sure that we still allowed that Wednesday time for their PLCs and, and other type of meetings, so I'm glad we didn't take that away out of the calendar. You know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't want to start until there was no COVID anymore or until there was a vaccine, but we, we can't do that. So I guess the discussions we have to have is delaying, you know, even a few days helpful? Do we want to go to the 17th? The positives and negatives on that, and Mr. Rusty, maybe you could help me. I don't know if we start deviating in a large way if that has to go back to the Calendar Committee or collective bargaining or during this executive order. We have the power to change a calendar.
Ms., Ms. Calderon, I believe the, as far as the Board making a decision to make a change to the calendar would be your decision. It wouldn't have to go back to the Committee. Um, I think you always have to keep in mind, when we start, you know, adding additional days, which we can do, um, there's just always implications, whether it's on the backend where we have to extend the school year. Right now, I know Dr. Griffin mentioned, we didn't move that into the year. Everything kind of stayed static in the second semester. Um, if we make some changes, it may, um, need to change, I don't know yet because I really have to look at it, but we could make adjustments Thanksgiving week. Currently, we use a full week. Families have enjoyed that, parents, teachers, everyone likes that break because it's a time they're, I don't know about this year, but in past, it's been the travel time for families. Um, but years ago, if you remember, Monday and Tuesday were student attendance days historically. Um, so that's something we could look at. Spring break is another time you could look at. There's a variety of things we could do. It really just depends on how many additional days we want to add, um, and how far do you want to push it? Um, if you're pushing it toward the end of the, end of the, uh, of August, it's obviously going to push us into the second week of June in school. Um, there's no way to get around that once you start moving this many dates.
Mr. Rusty, are there two days towards the end of the year that we could move up?
Dr. Griffin, there, there is a day that wasn't touched, um, which was March the 22nd, that's currently a teacher workday. And, you know, I don't know if we want to look at it, but, um, there's a teacher workday at the end of fourth quarter, that's the 26th. There's two days in post-plan. One of them is considered a teacher workday for the end of the quarter, and then there's the last day for teachers to clean up. Historically, they need, um, teachers comp that last day, so, um, it, but it would limit us right at the very end of the school year.
So, Ms. Pennick, I, the answer is yes. I think it's the best we can do.
Dr. Calderon?
Well, I guess my concluding remark is, you know, I don't want to make the two semesters unequal, and I think we've heard loud and clear through the years that we don't want to take the first semester to come back after the winter break to have final exams. So I, I want to make sure we hold with fidelity the clean cut of the semesters, you know, and as was said by other Board Members, we're really in a tough position here because we don't even have a dirty crystal ball to look into. We, we don't know what the numbers of COVID cases are going to look like tomorrow. We don't know what it's going to look like a month from now. You know, will an, an additional week help? Maybe not, maybe, but we don't have that kind of, we don't have good data. And so we're trying the best we can in a bad situation. Not everyone's going to be happy, but we have to stay focused. I'm trying to, A, not lose our funding to close down Seminole County Public Schools, the district that we all love so much, but B, to give our grace and compassion to our staff and to our families out there, to try to give them good choices because we believe in parental choice, and only your family can make your family's decisions. So, um, those would be my comments that we as Board Members need to ponder over the next few minutes.
Thank you. Member Sanchez?
First of all, um, you know, what Amy said earlier, and Dr. Calderon said to Christine, you know, we're a family. We're not like other Boards. We all get along, laugh, we giggle with, not just the Board Members, but all of each other. I mean, I don't think people realize that. One of the letters stated that, take your salaries. I don't think they realize that. We make, what, $40,000? I took an $18,000 pay cut to do this job that I love so much, that we spend a fortune to make sure we take care of our children and our teachers, and we give day in and day out for them. And this has got to be the most horrific decision I've ever had to make, and I really want to take it back because now I'm looking at this calendar thinking, are you kidding me? If I was back in the classroom, we need to add minutes onto the day. This is a joke. I can't do, this calendar doesn't give us enough time. I mean, I remember originally us talking about, feeling, let's see if we can see a three-week decrease in numbers, and I don't think we're going to see any decreases in numbers. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional, but I don't think we're going to, and this isn't going to give us enough time because people aren't taking it serious. I am, I think we could do better than this, but I know this is a union decision as well. And I really don't want to comment too much on it because I don't want to, I know that you all have to discuss it with the union, right, Mark?
As far, and I don't want to go too deep into this, but the reality is, uh, Ms. Sanchez, is the Board, and Ms. Beaman could also speak to this, it's a Board decision about the date that we're going to start school. Um, and there is language in the contract about us, um, to the extent possible, providing teacher workdays at the end of each quarter, and providing a winter break of two weeks, and providing a week of spring break, and all those things, and it says, when feasible. Um, these are obviously different times right now. Um, so I think it's a Board decision about how, how far you want to move that date. It can happen. I think what Dr. Calderon pointed out, in the past, there hasn't been an appetite to run the sec, the first semester into after the winter break. Years ago, we did go. If you remember, years ago, the second quarter didn't end until a week came back until January. We haven't done that in some time.
Right. And I don't want to do that.
It is, can be done. I think it, it, it's really a Board's decision about how far that start date has moved. We can make adjustments, but also there are implications as far as payroll, um, and that, again, is a Board decision, um, what would happen with that.
Now, what about early release days? Um, you know, when I taught in Orange County and Tal, and Leon County before I taught here, um, we didn't have early release days except once a month or once a semester. Do we necessarily need that? I mean, I feel like if I was back in the classroom right now, the anxiety level would just be through the roof, trying to think of how I'm going to get everything organized and be trained to do what I need to do. Or, we don't even know how many webcams we need. We don't, I mean, by the time we get everything back and buy, back from the Governor or Commissioner, and nobody, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and, um, you know, it's not a political thing, it's just a nightmare. And, and I love you guys all so much, and I appreciate every single one of you and everything you all do, and you know that. I just think that we've got to do, maybe, we, maybe the PDs just don't need to be there right now.
Well, Ms. Sanchez, the, the early, you, you brought up a different point, the early release days and the early release Wednesdays, those are in the con, those are contractual things that would have to be bargained. Um, currently, it's in the contract that we have three early release days at the end of the first semester and the end of the second semester. So those are delineated there, and, and so is the, uh, early release Wednesdays, I believe it's, is in there. So that's something that would require us to go back and bargain.
So do we need to vote on that?
I'm not sure what, um, what we would be voting, I'm not sure what the question is to vote on.
I mean, like, if we needed to bargain about Wednesdays, if that's something that anybody else on the Board was interested in.
I'm not sure is the goal for more PD or is it a later start date? Is I don't know. Later start date?
Yes.
I don't know that it would move a lot by taking early release days. I don't know if that would really help.
It's an hour a day, so I would have to look at, I can't think of it right now, but it's every Wednesday an hour. So we need seven of those or whatever, weeks of those in order to count as one day, right? 7.5?
I think Dr. Harper could speak to the fact that and I don't want to, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he could provide you some data as far as the number of hours that we currently submit for our elementary, middle and high.
Okay.
I will say this required what's required by statute. I know that we exceed the required number of hours each year. Now, how by how much and by how many days? I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy you for now, Member Sanchez?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Member Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to start first off by I don't, I think we're putting the cart before the horse with this. As much as I'd like to expedite this, if we don't have buy-in from our unions, what their employees are willing to, I don't know how desperate, how many people need paychecks. I don't know that. I could check. But if we don't talk with them first before we arbitrarily select a date, I think that's a mistake. Ms. Beaman, I'd also like to ask you, in the executive order, there is a recommendation that we comply with a minimum of 180 days or an hourly equivalent. It's waived to the extent necessary to give effect to this order. So I it is my belief that we can ask for a waiver in addition to, in addition to the, you know, not having the 180 days.
And and if I, Member Kraus, in looking at page six of that order, it makes clear that the submission of reopening plans and subsequent approval of those plans does not constitute a waiver of state statutes regarding instructional days and hours, rather, approval demonstrates how the district or school adheres to those statutes and rules. And so there's, there's been some discussion regarding that 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 this emergency order waives those requirements. That is not the case. And the language there on page six makes that clear. What I think is a possibility is for after submission of the approved plan, if there are some things that require us to look at things differently, then we make that request to the Department of Education. But that is not, it is not a waiver just per se in the order.
Also.
Essentially, what you're saying is when we a school gets COVID and we have to shut down, they don't have to make up the two weeks or four weeks or whatever it takes to come back. Is that correct?
Well, it would, if we are in a situation where we have an approved plan subsequently, we already have that in place and we have some circumstances that we do then request a waiver, I think that is what that language really speaks to. That's been my understanding and it's been conveyed to me, at least in the in the portions of the webinar that I've been able to listen to. That's, that's my understanding.
Okay. Well, if it's the board's desire to discuss this or vote on this this evening, this recommendation, I would advocate that we wait until there are four consecutive weeks of decline in COVID numbers in our county. That would be my suggestion and that takes us to the end of August. Pending what our brothers and sisters in the union say, we they if they need to be working now, we've got to figure this out so they're not in crisis.
And, you know, whatever we decide, we have to decide as quickly as possible because our families have to plan also. And right now, regardless of what option our families are planning on, it does start August 10th and we can delay if that if that is the board's will.
Thank you, Member Kraus. Dr. Griffin, could we vote to approve this calendar, which would give you a start and end date for the school year and then tweak something in the middle at another date?
I I think I would feel better if I just pulled the recommendation, wait until we see if there's a better plan that bubbles up and then bring that plan back to you. We would have to schedule a special meeting for that because our next meeting is not till the 28th and we'd be really putting our teachers and our, or really our employees and our families with a calendar change at a very late date.
Ms. Marimus, what what do you feel would be the earliest date, including advertising, et cetera, that we could have a meeting?
Well, if I might, for a special meeting, we would need at least the two days for to to put that information out.
Thank you. Do you want to still have Mr. Smith come up and speak?
I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to hear his perspective. Mr. Smith?
Good evening.
I'd love some feedback, Mr. Smith, on what you think about adding a few extra planning days to the calendar or even just some ideas about the calendar. You can see we're struggling with trying to figure out what to do to meet the needs of our employees and our families and what are some ideas that you have?
Well, I think the three days is a step in the right direction, but I don't think it's going to be enough. And just understand, I certainly can can answer and give you any input on this.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble hearing.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Can you please silence the phones in the audience? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. All right. I I do have to bring it back to our bylaws. I have to bring it back to our bargaining team. Anything positive or negative, whether I agree or disagree, I do bring, I do bring back to them all the proposals. I do think that adding or delaying the start time, what I'm seeing is the 10-month employees still return to work on August 3rd. Is that correct? It looks, it sounds like you just you're stating the the start, the student return date is a little bit different, but the employee calendar, it sounds like, is staying the same at this point.
That's correct. It would, students would come in the 13th to accommodate three additional planning days for our teachers.
Okay. As I said, that that's a step in the right direction. I would have to bring that back to the SCA board and the bargaining team in here and see what they have to say. Personally, I'm just saying personally, as listening to the teachers for as long as I have over the last couple of months and not to mention the way the trends are going right now with the infection rates and everything, it it may not be enough. It may have to go a little bit longer, but that's something that we could discuss when we see the rate, when we see the infection rates going up. All right.
Anything else, Mr. Smith? All right. Thank you, Dan.
Yes, right. You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair and Ms. Beaman, I'm going to pull my recommendation and we'll do additional work on the calendar. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Marimus, do you want to throw a couple of dates out there or not?
I'd like to work with the superintendent and the school board attorney for timing of noticing on and an opportunity to look at everyone's calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Calderon.
If I could just make another comment, I respect all the input that I've heard from my fellow board members and emails from families and teachers. As I said earlier, we don't control this virus. And Ms. Kraus, I know you wanted four weeks. The medical professionals I've talked to, they're saying two to three. If it was four weeks and all of a sudden miraculously we woke up tomorrow when it was a downward trend, it would be in time for the original start date. So I I don't feel comfortable kicking this can down the road because it's over something that we really don't have control over. And Dr. Griffin, I appreciate how quickly you put this recommendation together, but I think our teachers, our staff members and our community really need to know when we're going to be starting school and have that vision. I really don't want to delay our decision on a start date. I'd rather do the work that we need to do. I think we heard some very good information from Dr. Hussey this morning. And that's how I try to make my decisions and based on medical facts. I know we're all emotional. We've all had family members who have had COVID. We've all been touched by it personally, but I have to zero focus my thoughts, not on me, but what's best for them. So, Dr. Griffin, I don't know if that recommendation needs to be pulled. If you feel as being our superintendent, you would like to do that, I'm okay. But what I think I heard from Mr. Rusty, that this is not collectively bargained. The calendar is the school board's responsibility, so.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon. I would love to hear if the board members have other suggestions for a calendar. If we're going to, and we can write a recommendation right here and bring it. Do you possibly want to take a few minute break and reconvene?
That'll be fine. It's eight, 8:13 it looks like. Eight, 12, 10-minute break. Thank you. We'll reconvene. I think everybody's back. We'd like to reconvene this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members. Mr. Rusty has worked on another alternative for us I'd like us to take a look at. It's with a student start date of the 17th, but additional planning for our teachers. So, Mr. Rusty, whenever you're ready.
Okay, Dr. Griffin, I haven't had a chance to change the calendar physically.
That's okay.
I'm going to go to the other calendar, I'm going to go.
Tell them we're looking at it right now.
Just one second, board. I'm going to share my other calendar, just one moment. So, Dr. Griffin, this was the proposed calendar tonight, and it was with the start date for students being the 13th.
Okay.
And you, we talked about possibly moving that to the 17th, to move it a little bit farther out. We could do that and still start teachers on August the 4th, so we wouldn't impact their pay or the payroll. What we would do is, instead of, we changed it to be seven days during pre-plan, would now be nine, so we would have additional two days of pre-plan. Students would begin on August the 17th. The change that would have to happen is in second semester, to get two additional student attendance days, we would have to take the March teacher work day, which is March 22nd, and that would have to be the beginning of the fourth quarter. Where right now it shows the 23rd, we would move that to the 22nd, and that teacher work day would become a student attendance day, and we would move that work day to the beginning of the year. And then in May, May 26 would end up being the last day of school, instead of the 25th, the 26 would be the last day of school for students, but post-plan would only be one day. The biggest issue I know for, and I think we'd have to look at our contract, and I know we would, we would, I think we would easily waive it right now, what it says is that teachers can't use a comp day on that, on the first day of post-plan, but because it's, it would be only one day, we would obviously have to waive that. But that would be an easy change to capture two additional days.
Okay, so that would be a student start day of 17, of the 17th.
Correct.
And nine planning days for the teachers.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Ms. Alman, we'd like to hear the board's.
Thank you. Board members, Chair Pennock, Vice Chair Pennock.
I appreciate, I appreciate this. I think that it, it's, it's meeting in the middle. I agree with Dr. Calderon, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. It's, we're, this virus isn't going to go away, and we've got, we've, we've got options on the table for our families to pick. We've got options on the table for our teachers to pick how to teach, and we've all got to work together to make this work. We have an obligation to teach our students, and I hope that we can, I hope that we can come together and make this work. I like the 17th a lot better than the 13th, and a heck of a lot better than, than before. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Calderon?
Well, I think the positive with this is we are giving more preparation for our staff to get ready for the beginning of school. The negative is my comment that I made earlier, I really think families and staff appreciated having a short first week of school so they could use that weekend for schedule changes, which this year is going to be unprecedented, I'm sure. A word of caution, you know, I even had input on this, that keep in mind, I don't know if God could give us one more thing, but if a hurricane comes this first semester, I mean, we've already taken a lot of days out of it by starting the calendar later. So, I just want us all to have that in the back of our minds, that, you know, this might not be the only opportunity we're faced with in education this semester. I want us to go into a clear conscience with a vote. In a perfect world, I'd want to start on the 10th. We're never going to make everybody happy. We don't know what the numbers are going to do. They could go away tomorrow. I know the final test of the vaccine is occurring on July 27th, the last stages, so I feel really comfortable with the medical advice that we've gotten from Dr. Hussey and the presidents of the hospitals. We're, that's where I get my data from. I don't like the middlemen, or women. I could go with the will of the board, but I wouldn't want to go any later. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sanchez?
I don't really have much to say. I just, you know, I don't know about comp days here. You know, teachers usually get comp days since they can't, you know, they can take comp days for the days that are pre-planning days, or post-planning days, or teacher work day, that's not including a PD day, professional development. So, that's something I feel we need to look at, but I guess that's something that they can decide from there.
Thank you. Member Kraus?
Again, my only concern, and Attorney Beeman, you said that we have the power and authority to vote on the calendar. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm much better with the 17th start date for our students, and this, as Abby said, and Dr. Calderon said, this gives a lot more planning days for them. It also gives the virus another week, which I hope, today's numbers went down, that's a good thing. I don't have to keep wishing for a hurricane. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Calderon, thank you for putting this back on the table so we could get it wrapped up tonight. I can support the 17th as well, but I know these dates don't come without a price for teachers. When it gets to the second semester and they say, oh, you know, I had this date, and they took it away from me. So, I hope that we give our principals the authority to have some freedom for their teachers to have some non-student contact time, or some of their Wednesday planned days, to be able to do the things they need to do at the end of each semester. Okay, so, Dr. Griffin, do you want to give us a recommendation, please?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members, for your patience. I know it's, these things are difficult. My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County amend the 2021 calendar to have students begin on August 17th, 2020, and to allow for a total of nine pre-planned days beginning on August 4th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Soundless.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Maramus, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. By roll call vote, what is your vote, Vice Chairman Pennock?
Yes.
Member Calderon?
Yes.
Member Sanchez? Member Sanchez, you are muted. Can you unmute yourself?
No.
Member Kraus?
Yes.
Chairman Alman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you. So, seeing no further business, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.